Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this work-study session for Independent School District 624. Before we get started and call the roll, I just want to tell everybody to please be patient. The technology piece, we're used to doing it a different way during the pandemic, and I want to just let everybody know we're working through this to make sure we stay social-distanced and make sure that everybody stays safe. So with that, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ellison.
Hold on one second. I don't know which number that is because I was supposed to get a packet.
I'm 10.
So 10? Thank you. So can you turn on mic 10, please?
Ellison, here.
Mullen. Here.
Newmaster.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Arcan.
Here.
Beloit.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. We will move into our first discussion item, B1, which is the 2020-2021 Fall Planning Update. Dr. Kazmicek, mic 1, please.
Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. I'm going to start us off tonight. I just wanted to point out a couple of things on our website. Our Return to School Guide has been updated. We have a Fall 2020 FAQ document. There was quite a bit added to that late last week, and that will continue to be added to throughout the foreseeable future. Again, the Fall 2020 Guide and website is available. And then also, if you've noticed at the bottom of this particular slide, the Fall 2020 Updates, click here as a banner across the top so that it's much more easy for folks to find that. So now, I just want to stop and pause. Do you, do board members, do you have the presentation up on your screens? So I, yeah, okay. I know you, and you can see the one behind me, I think, to get an idea where we are.
All right.
Okay, and then this, I just wanted to share this. White Bear Lake Area Educators came up with this graphic, reminding folks to socially distance, wear masks, stay home and sick, wash, and to wash hands. And so we are supportive of this effort, obviously, and we're going to work to help to distribute this and make this widely available. So hats off to the White Bear Lake Area Educators for taking the initiative to pull that together. All right, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gillespie to move into K-12 grading, a hot topic from a few months ago, and we're here to give you an update on how this is going to look coming up this school year.
Dr. Gillespie, before you get started, can I just have a quick question? So as we work through this PowerPoint, as board members have questions, would you prefer that they wait till the end, or can they, can we just kind of move through it? What would you prefer?
No, we can move through it and ask questions, whatever.
Okay.
I have some of our colleagues here with us, from elementary and secondary administrators, to answer questions, too.
All right. I appreciate it. Welcome all. Thank you.
Thank you. So as promised, we have an update around grading as we move into the Fall 2020-2021 school year. And so we attended a conference called Grading for Equity with 19 leaders in July, leaders from district building, teacher and our union leadership, to really learn more around grading and what we wanted to accomplish as we think about starting the school year and then moving beyond this school year. We have two working groups that signed up between leadership and, again, teacher and union leadership to really decide what do we start with, and then beginning the conversation and moving into doing research and looking at the system-wide. It is something that will take us multiple years to really dive into, and so we wanted to build upon the work that we started in the spring, knowing that we learned a lot. We're proud of the work that we did, but we're moving from that crisis plan to a more sustainable plan, and we didn't want to add more work into our system, but we also know that we need to be able to move forward with a letter grade system based on feedback that we received, not only from our community, but also from post-secondary partners and research that we continued. Again, equity was, was, and continues to be the foundation of our work. Our commitment and equity commitment continues to support this work. When we think of nurturing the whole student, we disrupt systemic inequities by recognizing, honoring, and embracing all cultures with humility and respect. We continue to use the equity decision-making protocol when we think about our grading, and so thinking about how do we provide opportunities for students who've been marginalized within the system in the past? How do we ensure that we have equitable access for all? How do we eliminate barriers based on race, ethnicity, gender, disability, age, and other protected groups? And then again, how do we ensure the same rigorous standards for academic performance exist for all students? And so we received a lot of feedback during the spring, as you know, and then we continued to receive feedback throughout the summer around what are we going to do with grading as we move into this fall? And one thing that continued to emerge from both students and families was that we needed grading that included letter grades, and students felt really passionate about this, and it was across the board in terms of students, whether they were really successful and often received As as letter grades, or they were students who felt like they wanted a chance to increase their GPAs and what that looked like. Additionally, families really asked us to look at how that would impact their students moving forward, knowing that, again, we felt really positive and proud of what we did in the spring, but knowing that we have now a school year that we're looking at, and the long-term impact is different now. So as we look at what we're doing, we wanted to honor both the elementary and secondary aspect, and so it was really exciting to work with both those groups, and I wanted to have both groups share the work that they did, our decisions that we made thus far, and then our commitment to analyzing data, looking at learning opportunities for more educators, more staff, and then continuing the conversation this year well into the future as we navigate making sure that our grades and how we communicate how our students are achieving within our district is equitable. So now I'll introduce our colleague Lori Moser, Principal at Oneika, to talk about elementary grading.
Is it okay if I touch him? Okay. You can use the glove?
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Good evening.
Welcome.
All right. So do I need to address myself again? Lori Moser, Principal at Oneika. All right. So our report cards, when we looked at, when we polled the Elementary Grading Committee together, is we wanted to keep that foundation of our standards being based on a 3 is meets grade level, 2 is partially meets, and 1 does not meet, and then to continue to monitor and not land on, you know, having children just stop at that 1, but how do we actually get them to a 2 or a 3? So that's how we have always done our grading at the elementary level. We wanted to preserve that moving forward. And just knowing what was in line with how Joe Feldman, you know, presented all that information to us equitably, you know, we believe that, hey, you know, some of these things we are truly already doing in an equitable grading practice when we look at our standards base and how we evaluate our students based on success criteria and the standards, you know, from the state. And then in line with our equitable grading, or the equitable protocols, is we really looked at what can we do, also looking at our strategic plan of having students be the agents of their learning, how can we bring that back into our grading practices as well? So we wanted students to be able to develop ownership of their learning through practice with support, they're involved in goal-setting and progress monitoring of their learning, and develop an understanding of their learning progress. So with this model, we think that we can achieve that this year, you know, working with smaller groups of students, too, and ensuring that they have multiple opportunities to demonstrate mastery, so trying to get, you know, that's the goal of all of us as teachers, is to get our students to mastery. So how can we ensure that they have multiple chances to get a 3 and meet grade-level standards? And then to be really explicit with our rubrics and our success criteria so that students and parents know what the learning outcomes are and the expectations, so that it is very clear and explicit that this is what I need to do to get to that meets level. And then having teachers as well understand that across, you know, the grade level, because sometimes, you know, the way I interpret something is going to be different from somebody else. So that's how do we ensure that everyone has that same interpretation? Learning habits, so that's like, if you think about behavior, you know, and keeping that out of the actual score, you know, so if somebody's going to meet standards, it's not based on if they turned something in late or if they weren't paying attention in class. It's not, those learning skill habits are going to be evaluated separately from that learning standard. And then homework, making sure that that's practice and not factored into the final score. And that was really, you know, came out really clear, you know, with the training that we got from Joe Feldman.
I'll click for you. All right. Good evening, everyone. Ange Nelson, Principal at North Campus. I'm going to be the clicker for both Matt Minier and I, so we don't have to fuss with the gloves as much. But like Dr. Gillespie said, in the spring of last year, we spent a lot of time really thinking about our equitable grading practices and not wanting to punish students for the way that they were managing the stress of the pandemic. While we're looking at starting school and we know we need letter grades, we also know that that still exists. We're still managing stress, and so the first thing that our committee did was we wanted to take a look at what do letter grades mean and what would a scale look like? So as you can see, there's definitions for letter grades A through D, with A and B really reflecting students doing work independently or on their own with less support, and then students with a C or D needing some more support. And then you'll see that there's not an F grade. This is something that also came from Joe Feldman, which was during a time of pandemic, to have a student earn an F, when we don't really know what that F means, is it because they didn't learn the material, or is it because they're having a hard time managing the stress of COVID-19, that we would lean towards assigning an incomplete if a student showed some evidence of mastery, and a no grade would be for no evidence of learning? Like if they truly did not show any evidence, that would result in them needing to retake the course. But an incomplete would mean they gave us something, and something's happening, so they're not able to get to the D, but we will work with them to get them to the D in some sort of credit recovery format. And then the percentages would be as follows. And this is really just to streamline our system 612. So I can speak to North Campus. Last year did a lot of work around grading over the past couple of years, a lot of research, and a lot of that research was used as part of this committee's work as well, looking at best practices and equitable grading, and Joel Feldman's book and his conference was a piece of that. But just to make sure that 612, that everyone's using the same definitions of grades and then the same grading percentages, is super important.
So what will grades include and not include? And I think that this is born out of an opportunity that COVID presents. As we've talked to staff over the course of planning this summer, a common theme that we're hearing is consistency. It's important that we be consistent, and a grading policy that is consistent is one that is equitable for students. And so where do we get our grading policies from? At times, as a young educator myself, nobody said, here's how you grade, you just started grading. And I think that that sometimes happens as a necessity of need, and then you grow and you continue to utilize your skills and learn from your colleagues. And so those things sometimes just kind of get woven into our grades, and so we want to be really explicit that grades will not include things like tardies or participation, good or bad behavior, however that's being determined, late work, cheating, grade adjustments based upon behavior and non-academic indicators. And we want to make sure that we are a consistent system from elementary all the way up to them getting a high school diploma, and we want to make sure that we outline those things here. So what are the additional parameters included? We want to make sure that we're really based around essential learning outcomes, being very upfront with students about what we're looking for and how we can achieve that together as educator and student. That common summative assessments make our students better so that an experience in one classroom doesn't feel completely different. We still want the art of teaching, and that's critically important, but the student should walk out of Classroom A and Classroom B understanding and realizing what the standards were and if they've met them, or if they still need to continue to work towards those. That teacher-grade books are common and identical, again, talking about consistency and how, again, COVID presents an opportunity for us to allow educators and students to feel very consistent. But we also know that there are classes where there are going to be weighted grades, courses especially that speak to college-level credit, and that the ALC and our tech program will continue with pass and no credit and variable credits for students.
Maybe I'll just add one more thing, that these parameters, teachers are already doing these things, right? So when we look at common summative assessments, this isn't new work, this is just continued work, right? Just to make sure that the system is aligned 612.
So as we think of next steps for us, really we'll monitor systemically data that our buildings have been paying attention to, but we haven't necessarily looked at at K-12. And so seeing where trends are, where are we seeing gaps in our system, and then gather, continue to gather feedback as we look at where do we move next in terms of ensuring that our grades are accurate and really measuring what our students know and are able to do in relation to standards and skills, but also how our teachers are navigating and where do we have hiccups along the way in the system? We have some opportunities for vertical conversations. Our elementary educators have been doing standards-based grading for quite some time now, and so how can we learn what they've been doing and the practices that they've implemented and the experiences that our younger learners in our system are coming into secondary with and how we can build upon that? We need to talk more about learning habits. All of us want to make sure that we're building those learning habits with our students, but how do we do so in an equitable way and really build those habits that our industry and post-secondary partners want to see in our students, but interrogate those, and so that we're not unintentionally enforcing biases that we may or may not have based on how we experienced our system. And by system, I mean our educational system. We need more opportunities to learn together around grading, both as leaders and educators. And then North Campus is going to continue to move forward. They've done a lot of work around grading, and there's opportunities as building leadership teams want to dive deeper into grading. Grading is one of the most emotional things that we do as educators, and we care deeply about how we assess our students, and so it requires a lot of time, and making sure that we really give our educators time to do the research so that we understand why we're making the changes that we are making that. So that is where we are right now.
Any questions regarding the grading? Mrs. Beloit, mic 12.
Hi. I just have a couple of questions. So the common summative assessments, what does that look like at elementary and what does that look like at secondary? I'm not sure if they're going to be common summative assessments. What exactly does that mean?
Common summative assessments at secondary are similar unit tests, or they're end of a, you know, a bigger chunk of, all of Language Arts 9 has a similar paper on what they're teaching, something, so they're grading a topic, and everyone's grading the same standards and skills and looking at that. Elementary, I would need Lori to help me with, is it similar?
It's the same.
It's the same, yeah. So it, they've spent, our educators have spent a long time really looking at the standards and how do we look at measuring those standards across our collaborative teams, and how are we measuring those with an assessment that's common, looks the same with all of our students, so that we can see where are we doing well in terms of the teaching and how our students are doing, and where can we improve and help our students master those skills differently?
So is that not something we were doing previously?
Yep, it is. Really, the first three, four bullets are reinforcing stuff we've been doing for a significant amount of time.
So if I have two different science teachers or three different science teachers between North and South Campus, all teaching the same class, they would be using the same assessments for all of their students?
Same subject, same assessments, yep. So if they have, physical science uses the same assessments, biology uses the same assessments.
But would the teaching be different?
Yep.
Okay. So how will the, if participation engagement is not going to be part of the grade, how does, how does that look for secondary? It says that for elementary, those habits are going to be assessed. Is that something that's assessed and put on the report card at elementary, and what does that look like for secondary?
So last year, North Campus implemented kind of the same thing that we're suggesting now, where late work wouldn't be penalized and some of the behaviors, academic behaviors would not count towards the grade or be assessed. And what we saw is it really is a lot of natural consequences. So students have to learn a different way to use their studying habits, and if they didn't, if they didn't do well on a summative assessment, they had an opportunity to continue learning and show their learning by completing a relearning plan. So by coming in and meeting with the teacher, completing the assignments that they had not completed to show that they could do it. And I think that there's this fear that the mass majority of students would just not do it if they didn't get points for it, but that's just not what we saw. So we saw students struggle a little bit, honestly, at first around just this idea of if I'm not going to get points for it, I'm not going to do it. But soon they realized that if they didn't do it, they wouldn't do well on the summative assessment. And the summative assessment was 85% of their grade, so that was important to them. So they've continued to come in and work with staff around those things. Does that answer your question? So there isn't a spot on the report card for secondary where it would say something about their behavior. That would have to be communicated in a different way. So if it was attendance, it would be attendance and skyward. If it's behavior and non-engagement, it would be conversations with parents around what that looks like in the classroom, but it wouldn't be grade impacting.
Okay, so I guess, I guess my only issue with that is, so participation in world languages, I mean, that you would have to have some sort of participation in order to be able to do that, or in band, or music.
So there are some content areas where there's participation standards. It's actually in their standard to have participation, like FIED has that. Then there can be a rubric attached to that so that it's actually assessed by a rubric, just like a paper would be assessed by a rubric or a project. But it wasn't just the teachers kind of saying, I think you're participating enough or not enough, we're really trying to remove that bias. So if there is participation required in some of the world languages, you're right, then there would be a rubric to assess it.
So how do you make sure that, because there's some kids that do the homework really, really well, but they're not good test takers. So the summative assessments are going to be those overall tests for the areas that you've been studying in the previous couple of weeks. Some of those kids, the homework and those types of things helps to offset if they get, you know, a B+ on the test, but As on all the homework, they still end up with an A because they're doing the work. How do you, how are we going to balance that?
Right. Well, and as part of looking at grades, grades are really looking at what a student can know and can do. And so we want to look at the skills and the mastery of the standards, whereas when homework counts as a large part of their grade, it really is about collecting the points of the homework. And it maybe is less about learning the material, but just getting the points to raise their grade. This system, it does require students to take a deep dive into the content and have to show what they know and can do, and so if they, if they didn't do well on it, they have to work with their teacher to increase their score, but actually learn the material in a different way. And so relearning might look like retaking the test, but it also might look like talking with their teacher and talking through the answers or writing an essay. It might look different based on what the student is capable of doing, and it allows them to show what they know and can do in a way that fits what they, what they're comfortable with.
How does that affect the AP classes and CIS? Because they have their own standards that come along with them.
Right. So CIS is different in that way, so I'm not going to speak to that because I, we don't have any of those at North, so I know at South, in terms of like relearning and doing that, I don't want to give misinformation, because I guess I'm not sure on that one. But in terms of AP, we still want students to learn really at a deep level, because when they take the AP exam, they're required to show that they know and can do a lot, right? And so it really is the same, it's the same pattern that I just described, where if they don't do well, they're going to have to come in, do some relearning, and the teacher and student determine what relearning looks like, and then they can increase their score.
Well, but like for AP classes, depending on what they are, there's maybe three tests throughout the whole year. So their entire grade would be based off of those three tests as opposed to everything that builds into that previously, correct?
Right. Well, and it would be summative assessments, and so for, I know for some AP, that's essay writing, projects, and tests would all fall under the summative assessment umbrella, but those daily points that would be homework, that, at least at North last year, that was only 15% of their grade. You're right.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chapman?
Along the lines.
Mic 8, please. Sorry.
Along the lines of what will not be graded or what the grades won't include, I see cheating academic integrity. How is that going to be handled? If a student is caught cheating, what's going to be the protocol or the process for that?
So what, again, academic, or cheating is really an academic behavior, and so it wouldn't, I would say in the past, it would be, it could be, you can redo it, but you only get 50%. And then it goes back to if, when you look at a student's grade, you don't know, is that how they mastered the content, or is it because of something they did behavior-wise in the class? And so we do handle it as we would a behavior. So that could result in a discipline referral, parent conference, and then really the opportunity for students to show what they know and can do and get those, you know, and resubmit the assignment. You know, when we think about cheating, it's super important to get to the heart of why a student cheated. And what we found in our old grading system, when it was more about point collecting, students did try to cheat because they needed all the points they could get in order to increase their grade. But when it's flipped and really it's about what a student can, no one can do, you can't cheat on that, you know? So we didn't see a ton of cheating last year. We did see a little bit of it, but again, we handled it just like we would a behavior.
So if you have a student that habitually, I mean, it sounds like it's not a big issue, but if you were to have a student that was caught repeatedly cheating, what would happen at that point? I mean, you would look at suspension, expelling, whatever the...
We would handle it just like a behavior, right? Yep. But yeah, I, we haven't had many habitual cheaters, I would say, because when you get to the heart of why the student was cheating and address that, you know, with a student, yeah, we just don't see a lot of repeat offenders in that area.
Thank you.
Dr. Newmaster, mic 7, please.
Okay. I guess I'm thinking of my years at North Campus, and one thing that Ange said was that you don't have CIS at North anymore? Not a single class? Huh. Okay.
I can speak to that. Jen Babish, Teaching and Learning. So Dr. Newmaster, with CIS, we have our world language courses and AP as well, and just to kind of speak to that grading piece, we follow and work with the College Board directly, and we've reached out to the University of Minnesota as well, knowing that they are working, each department really will determine kind of what those outcomes are for learning. And, and so also, I was on the phone today with Century College as well. So, you know, with our CIS and AP, we know that that is such an important piece of what we offer to students, and so we want to do whatever we can during this time to ensure that they would be able to receive that credit that they deserve for completing those courses.
I'm not sure that that answers what I asked, though, because in the past, we had like AP Geography for ninth grade.
Yep.
And we had an American History class, and I have a neighbor that carefully took one every year as she worked on it, rather than have to cram it all into South Campus. So are you saying now no ninth and 10th graders can take a CIS course?
So I know at, for our CIS course offerings, I guess I can take this off there, I know we offer the world language, and we do offer the German and the Spanish and the French. And so I think it, you know, from my experience, and maybe a building principal can answer more specifically, that it depends on the enrollment, if we have enough students to take that course, if it's at North or South.
Dr. Newmaster, you're talking about AP classes. We have all those AP classes.
I'm not talking about AP. I'm talking about the ones we actually get a credit. I realize some of those are AP, but... I realize some of those are AP, but what are the ones that you would determine is concurrent, simply German five and Spanish five, if we still have people that hit that point?
Yes, yes, that is correct.
And then some of our pathway classes are concurrent enrollment as well, but they wouldn't be, CIS are the ones that we partner with the union for.
So there are none at North?
Not, not specifically CIS, no. We have AP concurrent enrollment.
And AP, it's only if you take the test and pass it. Again, that you get college credit, but you get a weighted grade for your high school grade because it was so robust.
Yep.
Okay, and then my other question, thinking about all the emphasis on summative rather than behavioral things, what does that do to some of the massive projects that I used to help kids do that were collaborative, which was a big effort and presentational? They can still be a summative when you're grading the different parts of them, correct?
And then where it would be common is in the rubric. So they would use a common rubric so that it, whether it be a speech or a project or presentation, they're still being assessed in a similar way, even if the project itself looks different.
Okay, because I'm thinking of different skills for social, emotional and the appeal of things, sometimes in a college music, uh, classes of performance or something like that, that's your, your final summative performance. So it's not just a pen and paper test, which means they better be well-written. So, okay. So your test could be an essay, just like they are in college?
Yep.
Okay, I think a lot of people, when they hear the word test, think something that's short answer and not a full thought hardly.
Yep, yeah, teachers spend a lot of time in their teams developing the summative assessments and so they, they work really collaboratively together to make sure that they aren't all just paper and pen tests.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. I was hating to think everything was kind of like Europe where it's the final end of the year, pen and paper thing and everything rests on that, which would be terrifying to the test anxious children.
Thank you, Dr. Newmaster. Dr. Arcan, Mike six.
First, I'd just like to say thank you, uh, what you're doing with grading. I know that we started talking about this in 2008 with Ken O'Connor, how this doesn't represent the student's grade, so I'm great to see that you're going in that direction. The first question I have is one of the things I don't see is if you talk to Ken O'Connor and other experts about eliminating zeros and how a zero in the gradebook can vastly affect that grade and not correctly calculate. So I'm wondering if you're going to address that?
Yeah, we've, we've talked, we have done quite a bit of research on that and kind of the, the floor of 50 in equal interval grading is kind of what you're referencing. So when we worked with Joe Feldman and went through his conference, we learned a lot about that. And we did talk about it and I can speak to the high school group at least, we did talk about it and really wanting to make sure that if we're going to have a solid grading system that everyone understands and feels really good about and is equitable, we need to make sure that we do so in a way that people can follow it, right? And if you do too much, too fast, while it is, um, the most equitable, uh, it might not get us to the results that we want. And so we really need to bring people along with us to continue to do the research and the work about what's going to be, um, you know, best for our 612 moving forward. And, and that's definitely a topic that people want to explore. And I think Dr. Glassy can, can talk about it a little bit, but you know, this work isn't stopping now. So I know that we'll continue to look at that because that is, um, the most equitable, right?
Uh, the other thing that we've heard talk about here, the concerns about behavior in the classroom, uh, if we talk to people in industry, that's one of the things they tell us they're concerned also. So you have to get creative and how do we grade what you know and can do and how do we grade your, your actual behavior? So one of the things I know places are developing is a work readiness standards. And so what you end up having is, is your grade on the content and then you get a grade on your work readiness and then that can be laid out. So that way an employer, when somebody comes in and you have two people side by side that got Bs, the determining factor can be, you know, what was your work readiness as you were preparing? That's one of the ways they're addressing that, but I, I still say it's very important that you remove those. And I applaud you once again because it does change the focus from grade, grades, A, B, C, D, to focusing on learning. And that, and so that's the way we need to go, so keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions about around grading? Okay, thank you. Dr. Kazbichek, number 13, please. Oh, it's not on yet. Mike 13? Put the switch on.
There we go. All right, thank you on the update on grading. A lot of great work going on with grading, even be, before this, uh, this spring, there was a lot going on and I think this has allowed us to accelerate that work, so very much appreciated the, the presentation. So at this point, I, I think if, board members, if you have questions about fall reopening, we, we entertain those and, um, but I also want to start off this portion by saying that I've had a lot of conversations in the last, uh, last couple of weeks about the plan to open. And, um, I think at this point, I'm going to, I'm going to be recommending that we delay the start of the school year to September 14th to allow our system to, um, be more ready for the school year. I've talked to, um, you know, you know, your name at principals, transportation folks, buildings and grounds, educators, um, human resources, and having that extra time to prepare for the school year will allow us to, to start the year in a better spot. I would remain with a, um, plan to move ahead with a K-12 hybrid model. And we'll continue to monitor our county data. And we're hopeful that we'll start to see some additional data that would allow us to see more granularly what our zip code data looks like, for example. I know that, um, that, that has, we haven't had any headway yet with Ramsey County on that, but, um, but we're trying, so. So anyway, that, that, that's where we're at and we're certainly willing to, there's a whole crew here and we'll, we'll be able to answer your questions. I know Dan Rozier is down here, Rebecca Edberg is here, sitting in place of Matt Mons who was unable to be here tonight. So we're happy to take your questions.
Questions regarding the opening of school, Mr. Chapman? Mike eight, you gotta, you gotta bear with me.
What will this, pushing this back a week, uh, what would this do as far as the school calendar?
So what we'll do is on the 14th, at, on the board meeting on the 14th, we'll come to you with an updated calendar and we'll, we'll pull days from within the, from throughout the school year to make up that difference, maybe, maybe not a one for one, but, um, so two or three days would likely pull from where we'd have school during the school year or we wouldn't have otherwise to make up for that time for student contact. We have to make sure that we're meeting our statutory requirements with student contact time. So we'll need to work through that.
So the plan, I'm sorry, but so the plan would be that the school year wouldn't be extended on the, the backside?
No, it wouldn't be extended on the backside. And we do have some time, um, to transition from one learning model to another, um, throughout the year, but I, you know, we wouldn't want to use up all that time or a big, significant amount of that time just to begin the school year. So we'd want to hold on to, to that in case we do need to shift throughout the year. Obviously, we don't know if that will happen, but, you know, it's likely.
Thank you.
Ms. Ellison, Mike 10?
Thank you, Chair Mullin. I have a couple of questions. I was looking again at the MDE recommendations and was surprised to find so little in those recommendations about teachers. There's a section at the end called educator support and professional learning. And there's a question that struck me is what plans do we have to ensure staffing capacity? What policies or regulations need to be updated to support staff? And how do we protect staff who are most at risk from COVID-19? So I guess my question is how, or one of my questions is how are we accommodating staff who have the health risks? I was doing some digging today and found that there are a couple of school districts like Stillwater and Motomidi who have designated online teachers. And so I'd like to know if this is an option for our teachers so that we're not asking them to choose between their health and their job? Because I, I don't know how many, if teachers are asking for a leave of absence, how many can we absorb before we're, we are not meeting our staffing capacity?
Allison and Rebecca, if you want to, I don't know if Rebecca, you've been in, I think you've probably been involved in some of the conversations, but I know, um, certainly Allison and Matt have, have some detail on that.
So we have been, um, working with HR, with the principals to figure out what alternative ways we can support and what remote teaching assignments would look like. And so we have an advisory council that we're partnering with union leadership and meeting on Fridays, and our goal is to have a concrete plan for specific staff members who've asked for it and what we can accommodate by this Friday for the requests we've had thus far, K-12. So what that looks like and what we can accommodate and still be able to offer hybrid and how we provide those supports, so, yeah.
So, so by Friday, those teachers that have made that request will have an answer one way or the other?
We would, yeah, I, in terms of the communication plan, I don't, I don't know how that would work through HR, but we would have a concrete plan that we would communicate and partner with our advisory council because we talked about it at our first meeting and partnering in ideas that we have. So that would be our plan is to have something concrete and be able to talk about it more from conceptual to actuality in terms of what does this look like? We do have a few of our elementary buildings that were really innovative and thinking of ways to flex within their current staffing, but not all of our elementaries have that same flexibility, so we're trying to be really creative, so, yeah.
And what's the status on hiring for subs?
Um, I can speak to that a little bit.
Can you please turn on Mike 15? Thank you.
So we did have the active posting for full-time reserve teachers out and that is still currently open. We were very successful in recruiting in that position, so we have an active candidate pool for building subs that we're prepared to offer to help fulfill the need for our employees out on leave.
I, I've had some, I've heard some concerns from various people who support various school models about how academics would be impacted. And so in the MDE document, there's a section called learning loss. And it says that when teachers increase expectations without providing more supports, students' outcomes have been shown to decline. And I guess my concern is that the increased expectations of distancing and masks and cleaning and transitions will affect academic achievement. And our teachers are excellent and I'm not disputing that at all, but their teaching students an entirely new way to be at school will most certainly impact the academic content that teachers are able to, to deliver. And so, um, what are going to, what are the supports going to be in place in the buildings to ensure that teachers' primary focus is going to be on their academic content and social, emotional learning?
Say more about supports. I'm hearing about safety or...
Yeah, about safety. So if, if teachers are going to be teaching their course, but then also having to teach students how to do a new way of school. And we, we know that that will take a little while. So if teachers are going to be monitoring, keeping kids apart and cleaning things and, you know, not having necessarily the, if you're in elementary, the pullouts for IEP students, um, how are we going to assure that all those safety precautions, which are essential, are not going to hinder teachers' ability to do the work that they are trained to do? I'm just, I'm concerned about the, the workload with all these other requirements now for teachers.
I can have some of my principal friends talk about some of the safety, but I, I don't know that I'm understanding the question.
Yeah, I guess, I may, and I'm not saying it very eloquently, I apologize, but, um, if, if, if a teacher's in a class with kids and teaching kids in their class and then also kids had a home distance learning, but then they're also expected to teach them and constantly saying, okay, stay back, okay, you got to stay there and make sure you have your mask on, put your mask on. Student with IEP, maybe they, there's not, you know, somebody to come do a pullout. That just feels like a lot of extra other duties as assigned. And so I, I know that, I know that our teachers can deliver the content, but it just feels to me like it's increased expectations could lean, lead to learning loss. And I don't want this to be taken as, of course, I, I know that teachers can do this work, but it feels like a heavy load.
Ms. Ellison, may I help for one second?
Sure.
Are you indicating that, or do we have the protocols in place to make sure that there's an increase in staff, to make sure that they can handle the extra load that's going to be put upon them during this time of, of need?
Yeah, because I mean, I looked at the, the recently updated, um, back to school, return to school document and I, I printed out the, the two images and I annotated them actually with the, like a parent and educator lens. And I was just thinking about, you know, if, if, um, a classroom is set up in this certain way and it's six feet apart, but teachers can't walk down the aisle because then that would put them three feet apart, you know? So how does that affect their ability to teach? And then if they've got to clean between classes, how much time does that take? What, you know, what is the, who does this additional sanitation throughout the day? So I mean, I've got a lot of notes here, but yes, that, that is what I'm asking.
So I'm, I can answer part of it then, and then I'll have Jen Babish talk a little bit more about the, what it looks like to have students in front of you and at home. I'll, I'll let her address that piece, but I think when we start any school year, there's always the establishing norms and expectations and behaviors. And this, while we've never had to teach students to wear masks and to socially distance, we have had to teach students how to have appropriate behavior in class. So that's not, that's not new, just what we're teaching will be slightly new, right? And I totally hear what you're saying, desks will have to be arranged in a certain way and it's less than ideal, but it's how we can get students back in the building in a safe way. And it's not, of course, how we would want it to be and it is going to look different. I have two young children and so I know that I, I work with them about mask wearing and socially distance and they're very in tune to it. I've also attended some of our student group meetings recently and they too want to be safe. They want to wear masks, they want to make sure that they're doing what they need to do because they don't want to get sick. And so I think, you know, I think there's a lot of fear that all students are just going to not wear masks and huddle up and, and not follow any rules and expectations, but I really don't believe that to be true. And for the students who do push it, which they may, um, there is protocols in place to address that. Because the bottom line is you have to socially distance, you have to wear a mask, you have to be safe and you have to use, you know, sanitizer. So I think, um, we do have those in place.
And then I was going to just mention something about, you know, like the distance, you know, like having teachers, you know, be in close proximity to students. And I believe like if, if it's not for a prolonged time of 15 minutes, you know, as long as they're wearing masks and I can come and I can, yep, you're doing great, okay, you're doing, you know, and you can still get to a student, you know, within, you know, like that two or three feet, but as long as you're not staying there for that, you know, 15 minutes or more, then the exposure is, is minimal. And I know that at our extended day at Onika, the kids have been fantastic about hand washing, wearing their masks, following the directions of staff. They have done an amazing job and yes, it's a smaller number of kids, but I have seen it work at elementary. And, you know, I just, I have faith in our teachers and our students that they're going to be able to pull it off and do it. And, and yeah, it's going to take some time, you know, and that's, you know, with any new thing, it's going to take some time, but I'm confident that they can do it.
And one more piece, I would say, you know, for secondary, because we are studying, starting out in the hybrid model and we know that we have families that are choosing distance learning, it will be less than 50% of students in the classroom. So I think, um, I know I've talked to a lot of teachers who had some of the same concerns and when we talked through what their classroom might actually look like, um, I think that some people were thinking about it in terms of, you know, I'm going to have 30 to 34 students in front of me, but that's not true. It will be about 15, so much more manageable numbers. And in terms of that we're managing just three classes a day for the first four weeks will definitely help in terms of workload.
Hi, Jen Babish. I can talk a little bit about just our flexible learning model and the instructional framework that we're using. And, um, I think one of the big things is we're, we're going to be using the gradual release of responsibility for instruction. And so, um, that work is from Douglas Fisher and Nancy Frye and it really is best practice instruction. And so the... And so, the idea is we start with the "I do," the teacher, with the focused instruction lesson. And then we go into "we do," and so the teacher can work with the students. And then we go to "you do it together," which promotes collaborative work. And then it moves to independent work. And so, as we think about synchronous and asynchronous learning with that model, we know that we can provide that direct instruction with focused instructional recordings or short videos to help kids that they can do asynchronously. That could be a live lesson in the classroom as well. And when we look at the "we do" and "you do together," that collaborative work is gonna be so important. And so, that's where we really can use our technology with our Google Meet to have kids that are possibly in distance learning and face-to-face, even being groups together so that they're collaborating. And then the teacher can, can still be in the room and be checking in, maybe working in a small group with students that are, are stuck, that need a little bit more reteaching before that would be pushed out to then an independent work. And so, that's, that's the, the framework that we're gonna use to help support teachers. And really, it is best practice, and most of them are using that framework already. And, you know, just conversations I've had with, with teachers, it is kinda just one-on-one and them talking with their departments or grade levels to figure out, okay, so what does this mean for us? How can we work together and collaborate to share that load of instruction as well? So, that may be one, you know, I'm a team member that's gonna, to do the instructional video for this lesson this week. And so, that kinda takes the, the burden off of the rest of the grade level teachers to really work together to ensure that we have that rigorous curriculum.
Thank you. I just, I have one more question. I have a couple others, but I wanna make sure there's time for my colleagues. And I, I might check in with Dr. Kazmicek and Dr. Gillespie about some of my, my notes that I made on this document. But I wanted to ask a question about the multiple points of entry. If we're talking about students coming into the buildings from multiple points, and I hate to even say this, but if we're, we're living in a time where we require lockdown drills and we know what has happened in schools, how can we assure our families that our buildings are safe? If we, if we have kids coming in and out of multiple places? Now, I only have kids in elementary and middle school, so I have not been in the high schools as much, and there might be policies. But in looking at some of these documents, how can we be assured that our buildings are gonna be safe?
So, I can speak to North. We'll still be using our same entry points. You know, in the morning, there was always two ways for students to come in through the building on Division and Bald Eagle. And then there's staff who are assigned supervisors that will be there, especially now as we make sure we need to monitor social distancing. So, that won't change a whole lot in that, in that way. When it comes to dismissal, we'll have a staggered dismissal time. And so, again, they'll be exiting out the same doors that they would have normally if school was just back in session.
And at elementary, we will have staff stationed at the doors, both for arrival and dismissal, at least two or three, being able to direct kids and watching kids come in, you know? And same with the buses in the back. So, we'll have staff monitoring everything.
So, that might just be helpful to put a little bit more detail on the website because as a parent, that's, and maybe I'm crazy, but that was the first place my brain went, is multiple points of entry, are my kids gonna be safe? So, thank you.
Is that Dr. Newmaster, mic seven, please?
Okay, I'm gonna add to a couple that Ms. Ellison started off on. And one refers back to a earlier time when we met and we're talking about how teachers would be free, as they always are, to take a class outside. And I was thinking also about the doors. So, if your class is very hot, it's an inside room at North Campus, and you wanna take your language class outside or your art class or whatever, I don't know that you're saying they can only go out the one door that they came in on because that's our hardened door? Or they could go out the door that's closest, the teacher can use their card to go back in again? Because one of the things we need to do is spread kids out, allow them a chance. And I've talked to a lot of people in the last two weeks and had many emails and phone calls. And some of them have said, "Well, if I go out with my kids and we're so dependent now on our Chromebooks, there's no Wi-Fi out there." You know, so they're thinking about that, as they're trying to think of spaces they could work with a class and take them out. So, part of it is the thing Jessica brought up. Are they allowed to go out anything but the hardened main door, which is a two-block walk if you're at the high school, south or north? Or can you just go out the closest door and come in and work outside and manage to sit either in the stadium or in the grass on the goose poop? So...
That, if, if a teacher's with them, they have a key card, you know, then they would be coming in through a secure door with their teacher. That's really appropriate still. I think when we look at this fall, even outdoor space is really gonna be regulated and managed because we have classes that require to be outside right now for safety reasons. You know, our FIAD classes will be mostly outside when they can. Some of our music classes, in order to follow some of the safety protocols as of right now, will also be outside. So, we're even scheduling kind of classroom-type areas. So, it will look different than, than in the past when teachers maybe would just be able to go outside to get some fresh air. It will look a little different, just to make sure that we're, everyone has a spot and, and that it's safe and following the safety protocols.
Okay, well, that's one question. Another question I had went back to our HR question. And again, I'm thinking back of something that Matt Monz said probably two meetings back when I asked him about how they were making accommodations for people that had issues if they would be allowed to be a distance teacher, since a significant portion of our population, maybe 20%, has chosen distance. And I know a couple of those families, they plan on distance. And so, they, and what I heard then was, yeah, we're gonna be working on that. And what I've heard recently is people are being asked to take a leave because there's no distant positions. And I know some other districts have people assigned to distance. So, I'm just wondering how we handle that? And maybe that's something you can't answer today, but that's a pretty important question. If we have, what's 20% of 8,000? I'm no mathematician, but it's a lot. So, I think that's important. And then the other part is if we have, and I have a neighbor that's talking about distance, is that student kind of a person on the side for a classroom teacher? They thought they were gonna have a distance teacher, and that was their distance classroom with distant students across the... So, I think that's kind of a misunderstanding that I had, that apparently parents have. They don't realize that their student is maybe a couple of distant students attached to this classroom and a couple to that. And if you're, let's say, a science teacher that has a, a problem, and, and it would be really risky to be in the classroom face-to-face while the virus is still raging, there's no reason why... The good thing about a distance teacher is they're in one place. They can gather kids from all their houses, doesn't matter. There's no transportation. So, I'm just wondering how we've looked at that option? So, that was one of my questions. Have we looked at distance? Are they part of a school community of their own, just like some of the other online schools? Because they're not looking at it, most of them that I've talked to, as a temporary. They're looking at it as a choice because this is not gonna be over soon, they believe. Or maybe they have someone in their household that's on chemo or something. And my other...
Dr. Newmaster, let's get an answer to that question before we move on to the next one. Is that all right?
So, I'm just kinda referring to questions that have been asked already that I still don't feel that I've got any kind of a, an answer to.
Dr. Kazmicek, or...
I could speak to the distance learning piece if you wanted.
I'm sure. Thank you.
Okay, so, as of right now, no. Distance learning students would not be assigned to a distance learning school or academy or, or teachers. That's not a program that we had going into this, and so it's not something that we clearly have established yet. What I would say is the, the final data is starting to come in in terms of exactly who is gonna be staying home for, for distance learning. And so, now it is kind of a puzzle, at, at least at the secondary level. It's really important for students to have content-level teachers that they're working with. And so, to see who exactly is going to be staying home, and then what teachers do we have that are also looking for those accommodations and trying to match them? Again, I can speak to North. We, we don't have a, a lot of that happening yet. And in terms of our student population, we're just nailing down exactly who and what those schedules look like and how they could potentially be matched. I mean, it is a giant puzzle, I have to say. But I, I don't know that it's, it's remaining at that 20% at every site. So, that's another variable that needs to be taken into account. But as this, you know, families have been asked to do their online annual update for high school, it's to release the schedule tomorrow, the 25th at 6:00. So, we should have a much more clear picture of exactly who is planning on staying home. And then if we're able to make those accommodations, those are the conversations that we can have now that we weren't able to have before because we were just working with rough numbers without, here's how many kids in physical science would need a physical science teacher? And then is there a physical science teacher looking for an accommodation? If that makes sense? Okay, and then at our elementary level, we are assuming that our distance learning students are a part of that classroom. So, if they have Mrs. Johnson, right now, that's where we have them placed, and they will be a part of Mrs. Johnson's class. And they will have access to everything that that teacher is doing within that classroom. So, if there is a mini lesson that they want to have a Google Meet and invite that student, you know, with the mini lesson that they're doing with three other kids, that student, that is distance learning at all times, is going to have access to that. They're gonna have access to pre-recorded lessons. So, it's, it's like they are a student in that classroom, and they will have opportunities, you know, to log in live, you know, for a Google Meet with their classroom at any time during the week. So, it's like they are still a student, but they're just at home, but they will have opportunities to feel like a part of that class. So, that's what we are working on right now at elementary and how that works, either, you know, like with a synchronous, you know, live Google Meet happening with a mini lesson or asynchronously when the teacher has recorded, like either pre-recorded during their prep times, you know, a mini lesson that they're gonna deliver? Or they've recorded a mini lesson in real time with their students that then those distance learning students can access after? And then having points of contact throughout the week with the students that are learning at home as well? So, they are considered, any distance learning student is gonna be considered a part of their community if they were in, in person or not.
So, then are they assigned to an A or a B? So, they really have a group that only has learning with their group two days a week?
Yes. So, they are assigned, you know, so depending on where their alphabet falls, yes. So, then that's how we've marked them, you know, within our class list right now.
And that's the same thing we're looking at in high school?
Yeah, so they, they really are making smaller cohorts because they are on an A-B schedule. The students on, on Monday and Wednesday will potentially never interact with the Tuesday and Thursday students. And that would be whether they're hybrid or distance learning.
Okay.
14. Dr. Newmaster, really the supports we're looking at are trying to accomplish all those different things that you're talking about. And so, how do we look at making sure that students feel part of a community? Is it that we can have a teacher who has a third-grade classroom and the numbers work out, and that's how that works out in that school community? Is it that we can have a Language Arts 11 teacher who has a classroom? It, it, it's not as easy to say we have this structure because of all the numbers that, that come together. So, really, we have many creative teacher leader teams working with administrators, thinking of all these different options. But I've been looking at those academy, online academy schools because I think it could be something maybe that we as a system wanna talk about. But all of them have that, they also have what we're trying to do. So, it's, it's not like it solves our current hybrid and how we're trying to do all this. It'll take a little bit of the numbers away, but they still are figuring out, you know, what about kids who have to quarantine for two weeks and all of these other intricacies? So, it's not, it's not like it, it kinda pushes things into this solid school and then makes it in an easier way to solve it. It actually adds a, a third or whatever number layer onto this complex problem that we're navigating right now.
Definitely, definitely complex. You know, those were some of the things that my brain was spinning about and thinking about. The distance portion. And the, and the other part of it that came up to me, came to me with many emails and a couple of discussions was your elementary specialists. And I know they've proposed some things to you. And I have a special love of music because both of my adult children, white bear grads, are professional musicians, performers, and teachers. And all of them are doing special adjustments to teach what they teach fully that you can't easily do. And our elementary specialists, if we're looking at social-emotional, they probably know the kids better than anybody because if they've been at that school as the music teacher, the FIAD teacher, the language teacher, they've seen those kids for three, four, maybe this is their fifth year. So, that's why they made the suggestion, and they certainly didn't wanna not see kids, but they all have many, many contacts. So, if they're doing their thing, and hopefully they start because their curriculum is important to the kids and that connection is important, I think they counted they had like 500 contacts. So, their proposal, obviously, you know what it was, that they hope that they can provide twice a week or whatever it is to the kids they know, distance. So, that was a question, was there a good response to that? Rather than just having a pullouts and stuff-ins with many more connections than anybody in the district has?
And that's something that we are still, you know, really focused on trying to solve and work through with our specialists. And I know that I am, you know, Mr. Morris and I from Hugo are gonna meet with our specialists tomorrow to kinda work through some things. So, and that's just something that we are really still focused on as an elementary group and how do we, how do we best use our specialists this year, keeping them safe, you know, and keeping our students safe as well? So, that is a question that we, I don't have an answer for you just yet, but know that we are working on that a lot.
Well, that, that's a, that's a concern, and it's a big one. And the kids that do well and love those classes may not do so well in other things. And it's everybody of every ability level. But if they can't march and bang and sing and do whatever, you've lost it. Where I know the FIAD teachers feel, they have space and outdoor areas. You don't have that with the language and the music and the instruments and things like that.
No, I 100% agree with you, you know, and that's, you know, I have a student at home too who is 100% into band, does everything musical that you could possibly imagine at school. So, yeah, it's, it's near and dear to my heart too, so.
Well, I've had a Korean drum teacher in my basement since March. So, it, you need space and distance, it works well. You can do everything distance. That's another unanswered question, I guess. But I hope it's answered soon and the kids can continue having good relationships and that it's not skipped for a month and it's another lost thing.
I'll let somebody else have a turn.
Mr. Chapman, mic eight. Thank you, Dr. Newmaster.
I've got a couple of questions. First of, has, the first one has to do with the mask situation. I was under the impression that we were gonna have a mask policy come before the policy committee, and maybe I've missed a communication there at some point. And I realized that I believe MDE is not requiring, or MDH, one of them is not requiring masks. How are we gonna handle the mask enforcement? What existing policy is going to come into play? Or I guess I'm a little confused as to where we're at with this whole mask situation and what we're gonna hinge the enforcement on?
Ms. Orne, mic 16, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chapman. We were working with Mick Walzberger, our district lawyer, on the mask or face covering policy. And at this time, we're gonna look at a procedure. So, we have received it, and we are going through it with our principals right now to make sure that in its implementation, it works. And then we will be bringing that back to this group at our next meeting.
Okay. At, at the policy committee meeting or which meeting?
I think we're gonna start with a protocol, and then we'll bring it to the policy meeting.
Which won't be till mid-September or so, I think?
Right. So, we'll have it in, in practice for, when we start school as a prot... Oh, go ahead. Oh, go ahead.
13, please. Thank you. So the, the policy that is developed will be followed and because it's under the governor's executive order, the board actually doesn't need to take action on the policy. We'll enforce what the governor says we need to enforce. If we take the next step of having the board review the policy, we would do that. And MSBA released the policy early, so we thought we had one ready to go, but then they, they needed to make some modifications to it so it wasn't ready to come to the policy committee. And we had Mick Walzberger, we took the extra step to have him review it to make sure that we weren't, you know, excluding a student from an education when we shouldn't be because of a mask issue. And so again, it's being worked on, it'll be brought back, whether or not it goes through the policy committee yet, may very well, but it will be enforceable from day one even if the board doesn't take action because it supports the executive order.
Okay. Thank you. Second question I've got has to do with getting back to the question of teachers requesting leave. How many have requests have we received from staff due to medical reasons, citing medical reasons, either themselves or people in their household? I'm just wondering at this point, how many have come in?
Yes, I do. The total leaves that we are currently tracking and working through with staff are under 40 requests. And that's a blend of those requesting a general leave and those who have a medical exemption or a medical based leave. So there's a wide variety of the requests that we've received, we're working through them individually.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Beloit, Mike 12, please.
So I just wanted to follow up on, on Kim's question. So the, I, I think what everyone's trying to get down to is if someone can't wear a mask because of a physical reason, everybody understands that that's, there's going to be a policy for that. I think the question really is for those that just refuse. Because we know we have some groups and some parents that, that won't wear them. What happens if they send their child, child isn't wearing it, gets on the bus, isn't wearing it, comes into school, isn't wearing it? I think that's kind of getting down to the nitty gritty of what then happens.
Dr. Kazmrich, Mike 13, please.
16.
Or excuse me, 16, please.
So with that, what we're working with is that, to that level of detail. So when we were looking at the other policy, it wasn't talking about an interactive process that really talked about students that weren't wearing masks and the reason behind those. And so what we have in this new protocol is something that gets to those exact questions and then how the administrative team would work with us, student and family on the reasons why they're not wearing the mask. And then we have multiple options that we're building into our pro, interactive process instead of maybe not just wearing the mask, but maybe wearing a shield and some different things that we have available. So this new protocol that we'll bring towards, to you is going to have that whole process to, to the point of refusal.
Okay, that kind of answers.
Yeah.
Okay. My other question, I kind of did the same thing that Ms. Allison did. I went through the MDH and MDE and kind of had a couple of questions on some, some, some details. Do we already have our designated COVID-9 program, program coordinators for each building already?
Yes.
And has that been communicated to, I'm assuming it probably hasn't been communicated to the staff yet because the staff is just getting back, but am I correct on that?
Mike three, please.
So we have a district COVID response team and we have building COVID response teams. At the building level, typically it'll be the principal or designee who will be the incident commander for the building response team. And then within, within their team, they'll have certain responsibilities. The second, the second position would be the contact tracing person responsible for that. And then the communication specialist, all those different areas will be covered within their teams. And so the buildings are creating their own team and we'll have a district team that will mirror that.
But do we know for sure that all of those teams have already been designated?
I don't know. The buildings are creating their own teams. Principals can address that.
Progress and you're right when you say that there hasn't been fully communicated as staff aren't fully back yet. So just making sure we're not overwhelming people, but it's in the works and the coordinators are for sure identified and we're working with custodial staff and the nursing staff in the buildings. So that will be coming, but yes, it's in the works.
Okay. So what is our specific plan to respond when someone tests positive? Because I know there's privacy issues and I just want to know when will that particular piece be communicated? And I'm asking these questions because these were things that were determined as we have to have these things in place before the opening of the schools. And I just want to know where we're at with these things.
Mike three and Mike 16, can you just turn them both on?
Okay. So when a staff member has been exposed or tested positive, they'll report to the incident commander at the building level. And that building level coordinator will then communicate immediately with the contact tracer at the building level who will have a script prepared by our regional response team. And they'll immediately contact that individual, interview them, and then the contact tracer calls the regional response team. And the regional response team guides the building on what the response will be. They'll, they've drafted letters and they'll determine based on that interview by the contact tracer, which letter would go to each individual.
Okay. So the privacy issues with this are, people could know that someone tested positive, but the privacy issues involved would be you can't state a name because there's the issue, privacy issues with that. Is that the only privacy issue we're dealing with, with this or?
Well, within, you know, HIPAA requirements, we've got to follow those. So yeah, a person would, privacy would be maintained. Now that individual could determine that it's in the best interest of their team to share that information. And so if, if I were that individual and tested positive or had a prolonged exposure, I could inform the rest of my team, that'd be my decision. I, I can violate my own, that wouldn't be a violation, but I, but I can determine who I want to let know. And I think in, as we've had incidents and for the most part, that's how it has played out. People have told their teams. We need to respect their privacy and we wouldn't share that information.
Okay.
Can you say anything you want to add to that?
I think that's pretty comprehensive.
All right. So do we have a system in place for staff and families to self-report?
We do. We've developed a, a Google form that they can access right from the website and report. And then that will generate an email immediately to the COVID response team at the building and they'll be able to begin the contact tracing immediately.
So, and the regional response team is the regional response team provided by the state?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. So what will be the system for notifying staff, family, and the public about a COVID positive on school premises?
Sure. It would be, it would be the direction of, of the regional response team. So they'll have letters prepared for each category of person. They'll determine the level of risk and then that will determine the level, the communication that will be sent to each, each individual or each stakeholder.
Will this be electronic mail?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Different topic. So received an email from a teacher today that I thought was interesting. So the, our teachers are tier one, their, their children are considered part of the tier one essential workers. And we have other tier one essential workers and their kids come to extended days. So on their off days, they would be potentially within whatever school they're at. Are those kids potentially going to be in classrooms on the days that, say they go Monday, Wednesday? Would they potentially be in classrooms Thursday or Tuesday, Thursday?
Yes. Is Christina here? Christina Thayer Anderson here? She got her way up.
Hi.
So.
Excuse me one second. I'm sorry. Can you identify yourself, please, for the, for the record?
Yes, so sorry. Christina Thayer Anderson, I'm our youth programs coordinator from Community Ed.
Thank you.
To answer your question, yes, our teachers are part of our tier one essential workers group. Our goal is to try to keep all of our students in their classrooms as much as possible. So all of our principals right now are working to try to figure out all their capacities and the number of students, excuse me, the number of students that they would be able to accept on their off days. So in your example of my student is an A student, they come Monday, Wednesday, but I'm a tier one worker and therefore I'd like them to be in school Tuesday, Thursday because I need to come to work. Ideally, it would be great to think that they'd be able to fit into our classrooms. At the same time, we, as Ange mentioned, are currently getting all of our final counts and we are unable to determine our final capacities and how many students we would be able to fit of those tier one essential workers until we have the final numbers of all of the students that have chosen to be in distance learning or in our hybrid model.
Don't we end up with an equity issue by doing this? By having them participate in the classroom whereas I have a third, I don't have a third grader. If I had a third grader and my, my child goes Monday, Wednesday, but they're home the other days, but if I'm a tier one worker, that child could potentially be in all of those days.
Yeah. So one of the things that I can bring up is yes, that has been discussed. One of the concerns we also have is that this mandated opportunity for all of our essential workers, we have a serious space issue as well. And so if we have seats available in a classroom, this allows us to serve as many tier one essential worker, working students as we possibly can where we don't have space elsewhere. We are working to try to lease space in the community, but that brings up a, a lot of other issues as I'm sure you can imagine as well. But this will hopefully allow us to serve as many students as possible in the spaces that we currently have where we also know that we have the resources to serve them to our fullest capacity as compared to moving to an off-campus location. But we do have multiple off-campus locations that we've also toured and that we're working through lease contracts as well because we won't even have the space in all of our classrooms for our tier one workers.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll move on from that, but I think that potentially is.
It's been, you know, it's a requirement. School districts must provide that service. And, and so we're figuring out how to do that. And it's not perfect.
No.
Absolutely. But there's no way to, there's no way to provide the childcare in a separate site or, or separate sites to the level that we're being, that we'd be required to do unless we utilize existing space and existing staffing. There's no, there's no other way to do it.
Okay. One last question. So if we.
Bring her back up, Dr. Nemester.
If, if we delay until September 14th, is that something we're going to have to vote on or we, you guys can just say?
I mean, I, you certainly can, but I was just thinking we would move ahead with that.
Okay.
Certainly.
So we're really only making up, having to make up for five days throughout the entire year?
Well, before and not necessarily four at each grade level because there's, you know, it's a stay and start. So, but, but anyway, we, we would probably look at using a portion of the allotted days for transition during the year. So maybe we wouldn't be doing the full four, but we might do, you know, try to find two or three to make up for it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Ms. Beloit, are you second, you good?
Yep, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson, Mike?
Can I add something to what Ms. Beloit had asked?
Sure.
Okay. You had asked about the contact tracing and how people will be notified and if it is a low-risk exposure, it'll be notification through email. If it's a high-risk exposure, it'll be notification via voice drop.
Again?
Voice drop.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson, Mike 11, please.
First, I would like to just thank all the teachers who are here today. We appreciate you and everything you do. I have a lot of things and I don't know where to start, but I'll start with one thing. And maybe it's just a oversight or there's a reason why, but there is a couple mask issues here currently in the board meeting. And this brings to mind if teachers are in the classroom teaching and they have to take their mask off every time they talk to students, yet we up here have microphones and we keep taking our masks off every time we talk. And then the requirement to wear the mask properly, which is something we are going to be teaching all of our children to do, and I have already been doing this, is to wear it covering your nose, covering your mouth, covering every part of this portion that can bring the aspirations into the air. If we can't even do that, that, that brings a lot of questions to mind how we are going to expect it to happen in the classroom. If we have a mask, do we have a rule that we have to wear a mask in, in our buildings? Like currently, right now? Yeah? So we have one member not wearing a mask, one person sitting here with the mask under their nose this whole meeting. And then how far apart are we all currently distanced? Did we measure how far? Because I feel like we're farther than six feet apart, but I could be wrong. I mean, my perception of distance isn't the best. Does somebody know how far apart we are currently?
Six foot, seven inches.
Six foot, seven inch. And then we're all in a big circle instead of being placed as, you know, where desks would be placed, I guess I have. It just seems to me that this is a very big stage. There's a lot more space up here than many of the classrooms I have been in and I'm concerned that we will be able to actually follow the guidelines. I have communication from a teacher who was told today that in her A model for kindergarten class, she will have 17 students. And in the B model, she will have 15 students. That currently includes tier one students being placed in her classroom. And that is a lot more than the, what 11 to 13 or what was our number we were trying to stick to? Do we have a number?
Depends on the room.
Depends on the room. I just, you know, if, if a normal kindergarten classroom had 21 to 22 students in it, 17 to 15 is not a 50% student ratio. I understand that we have more things than we can possibly manage and that we have to help these tier one students because we've been required to by the state. There are other districts who are, you know, and I don't know, this is a spacing issue. I understand this up in Hugo and Onika, we are building a new school because we don't have enough room for all of the students we have up there currently. So I don't know where we would put these kids. I, I get that whole part, but that just makes me question more the method or the path that we're currently on. There have been great models proposed by our teachers, at least that I have heard from. And I know that we can't do this on every level and some of our buildings don't have the extra staffing to handle it, but, and I, and I know it's been proposed to people. have the extra staffing to handle it, but, and I know it's been proposed to people, but I did like the, a teacher who contacted me and said that, you know, in their building, they have seven kindergarten teachers, so they could do, six teachers would take the AB students, one teacher would take all the Tier One students as well as the distant learner kids and then, or actually, I'm sorry, that's not right. The Tier One kids would still be divided up throughout the classroom, but that other teacher would take all the distant learner kids and one model, whether it be the A or the B model. Some of our schools don't have the staffing to do that, but, and I don't know how, this is just more complicated stuff, but is there a way? I just, I really have concern over, over getting emails from staff who have health issues and have, to me, what I have seen response-wise, have not been given very good options, you know, they could be distant learner teachers, they don't feel comfortable going in the classroom because whether they have diabetes or they're in the age range that is at a higher susceptibility of getting, you know, seriously sick with COVID. And they, it, from what I have seen, it doesn't appear that we are supporting them in those, it's either, well then, you know, take medical leave, but that's not what they want to do. Where I, I see a need for having teachers who could do it, take those distance learners. Is there a reason why we can't do it that way? And then that brings me to just thinking that this deadline of extending it to the fourteenth. If we feel the need like we need to do that, which I feel the need like we need to make it go a little farther, I guess one question I would have is, are teachers going to be teaching curriculum from day one? Because I have heard opposite of that. I, I have a teacher who said they were told that they should not expect to be teaching curriculum for the first month of school. I, I don't, that they would be more handling kids coming into the classroom and like figuring out how to work the classroom, how to wear masks, how do we social distance, how do we do all these things and not actually teaching curriculum. And that could be wrong, but that is a couple of the communications that I have heard.
Fourteen. Those are specialist teachers that have emailed you about that and we're still working through that?
No, it was actually on the grade level.
Then that's incorrect.
Okay. Because that could be like, I mean, that just doesn't seem like it would be a good thing. I guess another question along with that is, we are no longer using pull-out services this year, is that true?
Say more about that, pull-out services.
So, the kindergarten teachers that I have spoke with, a couple have been told with their students as an example, their ASD students, and this conscious discipline training, which I know we're going to speak to in a little bit, have been told that they will not, those students in the past would have been pulled out of the classroom when they were having, you know, whatever it was, a reaction to something and they're having a behavioral issue, that they would get pulled out of the classroom in the past and this year we are not pulling them out of the classroom?
I can speak to that. So each individual student, depending on what their behavior is, our first goal is to try to support them in the least restrictive environment, so when we say pulling them out, what we're really trying to do is support them within their classroom and if they can't be managed in the classroom, then we take them through a series of routines to help them regulate outside of the classroom. That is still happening, we're planning on that and conscious discipline is just one extra tool on how you can do that.
Okay, so if the teacher is teaching their hybrid students in the classroom while being live video to teach the distance learners who are at home and said child has an issue, that teacher's responsibility in a normal classroom would be to handle and try to get the student to get back into the routine without needing to be pulled out. But that's in a normal classroom environment, we are, this will not be that environment and that's all going to be live video fed from my understanding. You know, these students can be anything from just having a meltdown to violent reactions and it will be caught for the families at home to see. And then the teacher has to deal with that child while now abandoning all the other kids to focus on that child.
Yeah, so I would say that it's not anything different than we do in a traditional environment. We always try to embed within our schools different responses to student behavior on an individual basis. And so if there was something that was controlled through a Google Meet and a student from distance learning was looking into that class and there was a behavior, one of the protocols that we would be teaching is that they would turn off their camera at that time and the sound and they would go in and support the student. And if the student couldn't be supported in that way, we would do our normal protocol and have special education staff come and support that student.
Okay. I see a lot of complications with that and a lot of things that, that could go wrong. And I understand the concerns the teachers have because they will be the ones who will have the backlash that comes at them for any of the situations that happen in the classroom including the possibility of, you know, are we breaking privacy issues or now is this student who has emotional behavioral problems or whatever it may be even more called out because where the community as a whole wouldn't necessarily see that before? You are now, I mean, even if they turn the live feed off, whoever was already watching at home has concerns.
Sure. So in special education, all our students have a right to be in the classroom and all of our parents expect that if that's what the IEP team determined, that that student is going to be in the classroom and if they don't feel like they want somebody, they understand the ramifications that you're talking about, that there might be a distance learner that might see that behavior, but most parents that I've talked to assume that that would have happened in a traditional classroom anyways. And so maybe that student would go home and tell their mom or dad that Lisa had an escalation and tipped over a desk or something, whether that's viewed through a distance learning format or within the classroom. Most of our parents who have chosen to come to school expect their students to have their IEPs implemented as written.
Oh, and I completely agree that they should be in the classroom. They're, those are not the parents and the families that I am actually concerned with having, you know, it's the families who don't understand and don't have students with those issues that will see that. They're the ones, I guess, that I'm more concerned with what issues they're going to have. And I just, I, I feel like the, so is the live streaming going to be the whole entire day of the hybrid learning minus, you know, lunch and, or is it a portion of the day? Like just the morning, the first hour?
We're not live streaming. Live streaming is when it's open to the public and it's an open event and so if a teacher chooses as part of a synchronous learning opportunity to invite a group of students to a, to a Google Meet, so it would be just like we did, send an invite, it would be for a portion of a mini lesson, it wouldn't, it would, you know, the timeframe would be, you know, Jen maybe can tell about the parameters, but minimal because even for students to pay attention at home and how they engage at home, you'd want it to be meaningful and then it would be part of those learning frameworks, so it absolutely would not be open-ended, that's not, that is not, it's not live streaming period. It is an invite through Google Meet that the teacher would set up with the student as part of a synchronous learning opportunity.
Okay, so it wouldn't be like every day you assign on via, you know, the invite at the same time for the same portion of the class, it's going to be more of a...
They could every day if they wanted to have an invite for a port, a mini lesson if they chose that. They could also say, here's a pre-recorded lesson, there's opportunities for them to look at what type of synchronous learning opportunities that they're choosing, so there's, there's options there for them through the flexible learning.
Well, so then there's, I guess, obviously a misunderstanding on maybe my part and on their part on the live video stream, so that's good, they don't have to use them or they do have, like, do they have to use them every day or they can just do like pre-recorded or...
Jen, can you talk more about the synchronous learning opportunities?
Jen Babish, Teaching and Learning. Yeah, great question. So, we, we want our students to be able to have touchpoints with their teachers synchronously, but that could look very differently. It could be a mini lesson, for example, at elementary, that would maybe be three minutes long, that we would invite our distance learners to, to view or to be part of that meet. Or it could be, you know, I think it's really going to be teacher kind of leading that to really feel like working with their, their grade level teams to figure out how that would work. There, there will be times, I think, where maybe the touchpoint is just, I'm going to check in with this student one-on-one, maybe in a synchronous meeting to check in on possibly a mini lesson that they watched with an instructional video and now maybe we do a, a we do together, which may last, you know, three to five minutes or, you know, ten minutes. You know, Fridays, we know is, is a time for students to be able to, to work asynchronously, but that may also be a time where teachers can touch base with kids as well that may need additional support or help. And so it, I think to have a clear cut, it's going to be done one way or the other, I think, you know, is really hard. And, you know, our teacher teams are really working thoughtfully to try to think through what that could look like and using that gradual release, I think, has really helped kind of frame how those lessons could look. And last Monday, we, we met K-12 and looked to define what our essential learning standards would be, recognizing that we, we won't be able to have the same amount of content that we would if we were in person. And so, you know, teachers now have time to look at, they're determining their essential learning standards for the year in the different subject areas and then determining which assessments to, to see if students can see where they are with their learning along the way. And then that, I think, as, as a team, they're really determining that. And then the next steps, we're meeting with our curriculum leaders, our department leaders, our teacher leaders and determining then what that instruction looks like. So helping teachers to support them next will be with their lesson plans now that they, they have figured out what that essential learning will be for the school year.
Great, thank you. So that then would bring me into an email we received where it seemed, so if I just read the communication, is that okay? Because it's the only way that I guess I can ask, that kind of follows up to that is, they are saying that they appreciate the administration and they're willing to help them figure out their learning, well, let's see here. Regardless of the learning format, hybrid or distance, every student needs to have at least two live touchpoints with the content teacher per week. So for the hybrid students, those would take place on the days that they come to school. On the days that they do not come to school, it is expected that the hybrid students are working independently on assignments for the class. The touchpoints for distant students may take a number of forms, including joining the hybrid class via hangouts or meeting with their teacher and the teacher content area during a different part of the day. And then touchpoints for distant students have been challenging to figure out, happy to help individuals and departments with brainstorming. That was the communication that came to them via their building. So then they would like to know, you know, that they're happy that the administration is willing to help them figure it out, but they feel that it is the district's job to do that. Scheduling the class is not their job. I believe their job is more creating the learning boards and the curriculum, you know, that they're going to teach in their class. So now they are, kind of feel like they're just being told to figure it out, including many emails that have come about the space in the rooms and the teachers being in charge of figuring out how to make that space work and moving furniture that they can't put anywhere else because there's nowhere for it to go. I just, I guess I, I mean, I don't really maybe have a question, I just wonder how, to me, I think on the elementary level, it looks as if things could be figured out a lot easier than they can on the secondary level. I feel like a week is a great starting point for additional time, but it is not enough time. I don't, we have had how many meetings now and we have all asked multiple questions, we have gotten answers, but we've had more questions come because they continually keep coming and even the answers we get don't a hundred percent answer the question, at least not to a satisfactory level where, so I think on my own personal level, I have been working in my office pretty much the whole time, but I only work with one other person in my office. We have a building with other offices in it, they have all been pretty much shut down, people coming in, you know, certain days and others coming in, other days when we are together, we wear our masks, we social distance the best we can. So then it, you know, and I had issues with going back into my office. And like I said, I don't have a lot of people that I'm exposed to. I don't feel comfortable. I don't think that we have a plan in place that makes me feel that if I was a teacher, I would be comfortable going into the classroom. With that said, I also feel that our students really need to be back in school and I think we can do it, but I think we need more teacher input and I feel like we need teachers to be more actively involved in all of the planning. And, and that is not taken away from all of the hard work that everybody on the administration has done because I know that you have all worked tirelessly on this and I know that you are all very kind and caring individuals and, and this is a subject that is just as stressful for all of you as it is for everybody else. I feel like we need more time and I, I, I have, the last meeting we had, I literally didn't eat the entire day, I couldn't, I felt like I made a bad decision and I have not been able to forget it. And I want my kids at school. My oldest one has chosen to do distance learning because she feels, A, that sitting in a classroom for a hundred and ten minutes is, I mean, she has concentration issues, so why, we actually received emails from students who have asked us to shorten the class time because they will get bored, they will lose their concentration, they'll lose their focus. And these are, one of the students is somebody who takes AP and the CIS classes, so I would imagine that they are a student who works really hard and, you know, it wouldn't say that it was an issue unless they knew it was an issue. And then you get to this drop-off schedule that we have released where we will have a forty-minute time period where kids will be coming in for forty, forty-five minutes. And where are they going? They're going to the classroom and then the teacher is losing all of that pre-morning prep time or are they now just, and I don't even want to say it that way, but are they just now childcare providers for that part of the day? I've also heard suggestions of, you know, extending it to the MEA break. I, I don't feel like, I feel like that's more time than is needed if we can commit to extending it longer. Now, I don't think kids should have to not be in school. I don't understand why we can't start the year out in the distance learning format for, I mean, even if we did it through, you know, to the, I was trying to figure out via the calendar how we could do it just for the month of September and then start school in that first part of October or even just two weeks. I, I have too many concerns and there are too many questions and they are all very valid and the more data that comes out, and I have researched from all different formats and I know that there are parents who are begging us to get their kids back in school. I completely agree, I want my children back in school. I just don't feel like it's safe to do it. I just don't feel like it's safe to do it in the format that we're doing. And that isn't even bringing up questions about my reading about this Clorox 360 disinfectant spray that we are going to be asking our custodial staff to use, and all of the requirements and the, that's a whole nether subject. So, I guess I, I mean, I could ask a million questions and I would still have more questions to ask. So, I guess I will just, I'll just leave it at that, I guess.
Dr. Kazmercheck, do you want to answer, or you, how do you want to handle that?
I'm not.
Mic 13, please.
I'm not sure what specific question you want answered at this point.
I, is there a way, I guess, that we could reconsider our start time? And, I mean, a week is, is a great way to start, but I don't think it's enough time. And I guess I would wonder, I mean, if I'm the lone one on this idea, then that's fine. And I will completely support what we have already decided, and I will do my best to make it work, and I will help in any way that I can. I just wonder how everybody else feels about it, I guess.
So, what I'll do is I'll go to the, Dr. Arcan, because he was the next one that asked a question, and we can kind of work it through there. And then, if other board members want to comment, they can. Dr. Arcan?
Okay.
Mic 6, please.
I just have a couple of questions that I think that's a kind of flow that we've been talking about. I know last Thursday, I watched a candidate forum, and I heard continuing issues with airflow, and I thought we'd address them. There seems to be some misunderstanding or some concern that we don't have the airflow we need specifically for the inner rooms at North Campus and rooms here at Central Middle School were the two big ones that I've heard. That's the first question I have. And the second question is, there seems to be some questions about what PPE equipment will be issued to teachers and what they are going to have to purchase on their own. And I know we've talked about these, so I thought we could just restate what we're doing, and that's all I need to, thank you.
I know Mr. Roser's in the room, if he wouldn't mind. Dan, you want to come up and sit in the hot seat? Can you turn on mic 17, please? Because I have some questions too, Dan, so if you want to just sit right there at 17, that would be appreciated. So, do you want to talk about the ventilation system?
Oh, absolutely, yes. At our secondary buildings, our ventilation systems are quite old. We have worked, started working with Hallberg Engineering, and our maintenance team have partnered up with them. And since, pretty much all summer, that's been our big task for our maintenance team, is making sure everything's running, filters are clean, coils are clean. They've been up on roofs, checking exhaust fans, making sure everything's running. If something they found wasn't running, they've got a contractor over here to get it running right away. So, we're very confident that our systems are running as designed. And it is true that our systems are old, but the thing with the old systems, they don't have the modern controls like we do at our elementary schools, so they don't have the CO2 sensors, the static pressure sensors that sense when filters are dirty. But they do allow outside air to come in. We can open dampers up 100% this time of year and allow as much outside air as that system can pull in. So, our systems are pulling in air. The filters are clean. We've looked at upgrading to MERV 13 filters as recommended. So, many of our filters have been upgraded on the systems that can support it. Some systems can support MERV 13 filters. It just slows down the airflow, and it kind of chokes off your outside air. But in situations where it would support a MERV 13 filter, we've worked that way. And then after our maintenance team went through everything, we decided a couple of weeks ago, when we found out we were going back to the hybrid model, to partner up with Hallberg Engineering, and we asked them to go through our same system. So, room by room, they've been checking unit vents at all the schools. They've been checking our air handling units at all the schools just to make sure there's any little tweaks they can do to get even more airflow coming through. And they have found some small things, and they have. Marge, I'd like you to go over to the library over at North Campus where we put a streamer up on one of the vents, and you can actually see that thing whistling now, that, that the guys actually climbed inside. They cut holes to get the coils clean that probably haven't been cleaned in, ever, since the building. Yeah, so since 1965, and they cut access holes in some of the air handlers so they could crawl inside and clean coils and check to make sure the dampers were functioning properly. So, we've made some improvements. Inside rooms too, they've been working on some inside air handlers, and they've made some minor improvements. Hopefully, hopefully, we're getting more airflow, but Mr. Wald has purchased some air purifiers too. So, if we do continue to have some problem areas, that's, them are areas where we would put an air purifier to help.
How do we know where there's a problem area, though?
We'll usually hear about it. That's our first.
Well, that would be hot, but I'm just thinking the amount of airflow that exchanges air is what we really need to know. Is there any way you have to reassure people and say, "We're having complete airflow"? You know, all these articles say how often it should happen. And part of it depends on what you're doing. If you're playing a band, that's a totally different thing than a class that's sitting reading something.
Yeah, and different rooms are designed for different things. I was actually talking to one of the mechanical engineers at Hallberg today and asked him, "How often should our air turn over in our classrooms?" And their current designs are anywhere from four to eight times per hour. And in our elementary schools, they're all fairly current systems, and I'm confident we're getting that flow. In our older buildings, with 100% dampers opening, we're probably coming close to that. Hopefully, we're going to supplement that with windows being open to improve that even more. But interior rooms, we will have to keep an eye on, and there is CO2 testing we can have done in some of our interior rooms. Usually, this time of year, especially if you cut down on student populations in a room, you won't have real high CO2 levels. But then, as we get into winter and we've got to choke down that outside air coming in, then we're really going to have to keep an eye on CO2 levels. And we've got companies we work with to come in and do testing, so we can, we can keep a pretty good gauge of that, I think.
I'm going to ask a foolish question, but what does a CO2 level have to do with the outer-inair exchange to reassure the person that their air really is moving enough to get the virus out of the room, if there is any there?
If you see a high CO2 level, that means you're not getting enough outside air coming in to exchange that air. So, you'll smell it too. The room will smell stale.
Well, they do.
Yep, absolutely.
Dr. Newmaster, if you don't mind, I want to let Dr. Arcan finish his questions, and then I'll get you on the list. I just want to make sure that his questions are, continue to get answered.
The only other one we had was what PPE equipment is being issued to teachers.
Mic 3, please.
I can answer that. So, masks, there'll be masks provided for, several cloth masks provided for each teacher and student as well as about five disposable masks that we'll have available for staff and students. Plastic Shield masks will be provided for each teacher, for each staff member. We have about 2,400 of those. As you remember, the governor said he would invest in some masks and shields, so we're counting those in. We're picking those up tomorrow. This came in a little earlier than we thought they might. We have N95 and KN95 masks that are available. Our custodians who are using the electrostatic sprayers have been, I'll have those. And then we have them available for people who would choose to wear one. We have some clear masks for students who might need it, hearing impaired students in an environment where that would be necessary for ASL students where facial expressions matter in terms of being able to communicate effectively with ASL. Plastic barriers, we've ordered, I think we're close to 200 plastic barriers for high-traffic areas. Those will all be available. Most of those are placed. The rest are just coming in. Rubber gloves for every classroom, disinfectant spray, hand sanitizer, soap where there's a sink. Disposable gowns where we have staff who might need those, might be in a special ed area where there's toileting or in a nurse's office.
Thank you. I yield the floor back to you, Chair Mullen.
Thank you, Dr. Arcan. I have several questions, if you guys don't mind. So, I was definitely interested in the ventilation system. And before, when you talked to Hallberg's Engineering, did they talk about particles that are let through? Did they talk about the filtering system? Do they make any recommendations on when those filters should be changed? And do we have enough filters to be able to do so?
Yes, they did recommend you change filters more often just because the pressure changes. If a filter builds up with dust or debris, it's going to let less air through, so they did recommend them changing them more often. We're actually, we have, in the past, we've changed filters three times a year. We're going to go to every eight weeks on our filter changes just so we're not restricting airflow, and we're getting as much push-through possible. And Hallberg thought that was a good, good start for us.
Also, you know, as you've been hearing tonight, right, we've got a tremendous amount of communication and phone calls and emails regarding, you know, concerns that the staff has, that parents have. One of the things that was brought to my attention or our attention was the cleaning of the classrooms and the fact that maybe a custodian is not able to touch every classroom every night. Is there a plan in place to achieve that, or to, and if it is, can you share some of those so that there can be some?
Absolutely. Yeah, yes, we've got good practice with the five extended-day sites and the one summer school site. And things are different for custodians. And until they experience it, until the extended-day sites experienced it and Lincoln over at Summer School experienced, I don't think the custodians really got it that their job is different now. Sure, they're going to clean, but the number-one priority is disinfecting and sanitizing classrooms. So, in the past, where they do their cleaning routine, they'd get their trash, they'd get their bathrooms, vacuum their rooms. Right now, the focus is on disinfecting. So, I've been telling with custodians, and I'm meeting with every custodian in our district as we start getting prepared now, is things are different for you. We know you only have eight hours in your shift, and we're putting all this enhanced disinfecting, as you've heard. We're not expecting you to vacuum rooms every night. We're not expecting you to sweep rooms every night. We need for you to get in a new routine where you're getting your trash, you're getting your bathrooms, you're getting your hallways, and then you're doing a couple hours of extra disinfecting with the electrostatic sprayers where you're going through every classroom, every bathroom, every night, spraying down the high-touchpoint areas that we're going to identify. So, it's true, we're not going to be able to vacuum every room every night. The custodians aren't going to be able to sweep every night, but they are going to be able to disinfect every night.
Okay. Dr. Newmaster, thank you.
All right, thank you. Also, I've got the usual random questions, but they kind of build on what people have already said. Is this mic on? I can't tell from here. Okay. The ubiquitous mask question. I can tell you, I've been wearing masks pretty religiously when I go out. I have two pre-existing conditions, so I'm serious about masks. And most of the people that I interact with are, we're adults. We're pretty careful about our masks. They don't last. I can tell you, I had the greatest mask I just bought. I washed it a few times, said, "Vote, vote, vote", and the little ear elastics already fell off. The disposable ones, I can't even make them last a day. So, when you look at the number of masks, to expect full compliance that a classroom teacher is going to have to have available to hand somebody, or maybe you can fix the mask with a safety pin or something, they aren't going to last with kids because I think I'm pretty careful. I was really disappointed when my favorite one went, went to pieces. So, I think we're going to need more masks. And I know that the Korean government sent all Korean adoptees a pack of 50 N94s to start the school year with. Their kids all wear masks and did during normal flu season. And they expected to be pretty steadily replacing them with decent-quality masks. And if we expect compliance and kids fiddle, just like you all are taking your masks off and on, those little rubber bands come off. So, that's just a reality if we're going to expect compliance that we're going to have to have some on hand in every classroom, more than five. Another question I had, thinking of being a classroom teacher, and when I heard that the Tier One kids, whenever possible, were going to be put in their classroom in effect to be babysat for two days because they're going to be repeating the lessons they've already had. And I thought of the times that I had kids repeat, say, German III, and they're sitting in the class where it's already been taught. Takes a creative teacher, and you have different activities for them, but that's asking one more thing of the teacher. And if we don't have a place to do daycare for these kids, because the last time we did it, none of our kids were in school, I can understand you've got a space problem. But it's also a real problem for the teacher, as much as she may love these kids, to have them two days in a row for the same lesson. So, and that's your distant students, too, when you think repetition. And we talk about repeating, but I'm sure you've thought about that. So, I just wonder what, if you're going to have another whole level of things that those kids are going to do. So, masks, repetition, the fact that we'll have learning loss with the block that is the chosen way to do. When you do something for a month and you don't do it, I don't know what you've done with classes like language and orchestra and band that need daily. So, you have an answer for that? I wouldn't want to see our whole music program destroyed with the block system.
Dr. Newmaster, if you may. Mr. Wald, can you, can tell us, I want to answer some of those before we get too far into asking them. So, if you'll just bear with me one second. About ordering masks, do we continue to purchase additional masks moving forward?
Yeah, we'll be ordering more masks. There's no shortage of mask providers out there right now. We get about 20 to 25 emails a day from vendors trying to sell us masks. So, we have about 50,000 disposables in stock. So, I suspect we're probably going to get another 50,000. And if need be, we'll get another 50,000 after that.
And if you look at the quality of the mask, you know, the paper ones don't last. And you're also going to have kids coming with a bandana they think will do. You're going to have to decide. And the ones that they just kind of pull up that are a neck thing, what kind of masks? I can see secondary kids, you're going to say, "What counts as a mask?" So, that's just something to make the quality. I remember, what's a hat? What's a hood? You know, that sort of thing. And the compliance thing, if you've got a replacement, it helps. If you don't have a replacement, you could be infecting everyone in a classroom.
So, and then the second, your second question was regarding something that we had discussed. I think there needs to be some, can you please repeat it? I want to just make sure we're getting through these, and I'm not trying to rush you.
Right. I think that was when I talked about what we're doing with the Tier One kids.
And I think there needs to be some follow-up there. And I think that, that's, I think that it was answered, but then there, I believe there needs to be a little bit of follow-up, correct?
I'm thinking that that's, that's a specific problem that exemplifies some of the other problems that we're getting. People are working on it, and there's a lot of floating models. And I'm thinking the classroom teacher, that's another big thing to think about. To suddenly discover you've got three or four kids that have already done everything twice in your classroom. So, maybe Ms. Babish is coming up to answer that one. She knows it.
Thanks. Jen Babish, Teaching and Learning. So, Dr. Newmaster, I think that's a great question. They will not be repeating lessons, and so, it will be lessons Monday through Thursday, and then that touchpoint on Friday, if it's relearning or independent learning. And so, And so, the model that we have with the gradual release will allow for, if we're at distance learning, hybrid learning, if kids are in front of us or at home, that they will be able to have a continuous lesson throughout the week. And so, we will not be repeating any lessons to any groups of kids.
Hmm. So, your teacher makes a four-day lesson plan, and A and B get day one and three, or whatever?
Yep. So, um, you know, it's, and this is, this is good, because this is kind of the, the talk that we're having with the, the teachers as well. So, as we look at that, that first quarter, that essential learning is roughly about 22 days, four weeks. And so, talking with teachers, we talked about, well, even if we broke it off into a week, what could that essential learning, what would that time be in a week that you would do a lesson? And then, we know that lessons are going to vary depending on the student's needs. And so, those formative assessments, those check-for-understandings could possibly, you know, maybe there's a concept that takes only three days, and then maybe there's a concept that would take five or six days, depending on the kid's learning. And so, we're trying to do kind of that backwards design as well, to kind of say, what is our overall essential learning standards? And then to work backwards with those assessments and try to chunk those out. But, so, kids will be getting a different lesson each day, but that may look different. It may be an instructional video. It may be collaboration work with their peers over Google Meet. And so, that will vary based on the student's needs.
Well, that, that clarifies it. And it also tells me that the learning boards that you're creating are there, whether you're doing hybrid, or we may turn on a dime and we're distance. So, if we decide to start later with hybrid, we could start with what you've worked on already for distance. Because I think that's what North St. Paul sounds like they're doing now. They're going to do a soft start.
So, we, the, the model was very intentional, so that if we did have to flip on a dime for whatever model, if it's distance or if it's hybrid, that we could make that switch pretty easily. And so, our students wouldn't see that impact from that transition.
So, what you've been working on now works for any model?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you have anything else, Dr. Newmaster?
Well, I've just had, I'm going to just summarize it this way. I have a lot of questions about safety issues. There's a lot of things that aren't, that are still kind of fluid, and, and they're being worked on creatively. But I see other districts that are starting with distance and moving into hybrid. And now, it looks like we're starting to maybe think about starting a little bit later. I'm just wondering, have we ever given serious consideration to starting? And when you've got all your pieces together, and it's clear to parents as well as teachers, what's happening, you move. Because I know that's what Rochester decided to do. So, I'm just curious, how many, and the paper keeps trying to keep us up with what's happening. Are we, are we trying to match what everyone's doing? Are we looking at the fact that we're mostly Ramsey County, where Anoka, I don't know what they're up to right now, but they're a lot more rural? So, I mean, we can't balance it that way. But I guess that's a question for Dr. K.
You're asking what our data are for Ramsey County?
No, I'm asking...
Our two-week figure is at the 22, which is on the low end of the 20 to 30 range, which indicates hybrid K-12.
That would be the best that we would do. Um, but we don't have to do hybrid, as some are doing distance. And they're doing hybrid with different grades or whatever.
Correct.
Well, I just have some questions about how we're dealing with contact points, safety. And it just feels like the clock is ticking. And school is starting in days. And even if you postpone it to the 14th, we've gained four days after Labor Day. I don't know how much difference that makes, if everything will be clear, or if, we should start a little later. I'm, I know we made the voice, the vote. And I truly thought, with all the pieces in play, you know, I like to believe and be positive, things will be clear. But I think there's so many people with questions out there and so many unfinished things. Kind of feel like Angela, but I, I know it comes down to Dr. Kazmercheck.
Thank you, Dr. Newmaster. Is that...
I guess so.
Thank you. Mr. Chapman? Mic eight, please.
Terms of the learning boards, and I, I don't know who will speak to this, but just wondering when those are going to be finalized, if we were to continue on at the path we're going and remain, starting on the eighth, and it sounds like we may not, but when are those boards slated to be finalized? I know there's been some expression that they need to get finalized sooner rather than later. And I'm just curious as to when that, when that's slated to be.
Yeah, we were actually just talking about that today. And our goal, like, we have shared the learning boards with all of our elementary teachers now. So, they all have the template, the draft template. And we've been instructing them that they absolutely can use that template to start thinking and planning and creating, and, you know, looking within that. And we don't think that we're going to have many tweaks to it. The, the whole purpose for waiting was to make sure that we got it right and to get a lot of input and not burden teachers with having to do work before they were back on the 31st. So, that was our original plan, you know, to wait. But, you know, right now, we're moving up, you know, kind of our timeline as, you know, when we can pull teachers together and get them to look at it again, and then get it in the hands of the finalized product in the hands of teachers as soon as humanly possible, which would be early next week. So, that's our goal. But, like, I met with my teachers today and said, you know, "Here it is. Go ahead and start thinking about how you can create and put material on there." But that, that learning board is more of just the landing platform for where to house lessons and activities that you're already going to be creating. So, it's just a way to think, I'm going to, so now I kind of have the, the out, the picture of it. So, now I can start creating the lessons, and then I can input them and put them on that learning board as soon as I have them done. So, they do all have that template right now, that they can play around with and look at. So, but our finalized product, we think, is not going to change too much and should be in their hands early, early next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other?
Are there any other questions? I know that there's still a lot of things that need to be worked out, and I know, Mr. Chapman, I'm sorry.
Just one other question. What, if anything, are we looking to do as far as cutting out any extraneous commitments or, or things required of staff? I know there was an email that I think all of us in this room received or on the stage here relative to a suggestion of reducing the time spent on convocation, for example, some things like that. Has any thought been given to that, to free up more time for the staff to, to do what is needed for the classroom development in this situation?
Mic 14, please.
That week really is for the buildings. I can't speak to whether convocation is shorter. I don't remember the exact time. But in terms of, historically, we've had more district PD, and really, there isn't any. There's one hour and a half session around equity that I asked that buildings complete by the end of September. And so, trying to be flexible with time on that Friday. And if we need to be even more flexible, we can. But it's around some really exciting work that we have in equity, but that's the only district PD that we would have. So, and talked with principals about defaulting to as much work time as possible and building professional development to support being ready for our hybrid model. So, there is no other district PD that week.
Mic 13, please.
Convocation will go on. It'll, it'll be done differently. It'll be, Marissa, if you want to describe how to work with, with U2, but there's a keynote speaker around equity. Again, the, the idea of pushing the start date to allow more time to prepare, that was the thinking behind that. So, but yes, there's still a convocation, and there's some, there's some important work to do with that as well. So, I don't know if you need any, I don't know if you need to follow up, Marissa, but that's, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Chapman?
No.
Thank you. Is there any other questions relating to this conversation? I know there's a, a lot of stuff going on. I, I know there's some follow-up. I want to be respectful of the time, because I know we're, we're moving through it. I think we've shot the agenda out the window. So, but are there any other questions, any other comments? Ms. Thompson, did you have something else?
I have, uh...
Can you turn, thank you.
Uh, one more question about, did, I don't know if we got a definite answer of if the tier-one students are in class all week, if they will be learning with the A students and the B students. I'm sorry if maybe I missed it when it was answered, but if those tier-one students are in that classroom, say, all four days, are they learning the same thing? They're not?
Ms. Babish.
Jen Babish. So, if, if we think about the tier-one students, let's say they do hybrid, and so, they would be, maybe they're, they're in class on Monday and Wednesday. And then, they would be home, right, in a normal situation on Tuesday and Thursday. So, they do more of that asynchronous learning. And so, if they are in the building and in the classroom, they would still get that lesson, but they would just be in, in the school instead of at home. And so, as I mentioned before, it would still be a different lesson with that gradual release. So, they would get that same, same lesson that they would have at home, but they'd be in class.
Okay.
So, new learning every day.
New learning every day. Okay. So, then, like, whatever the teacher was teaching for the B student, say, they were A students, and then they're in class, when the B students are there, the teacher will have something for them to be, they would be doing what all the other kids who are at home would be doing, and it wouldn't really be, it would just be following what the other kids are doing.
Yep. So...
Sorry for asking that again, but...
No, that's, that's, no problem. So, like, if I'm lesson planning for Monday through Thursday, and I'd have a new lesson each day, and that's where those groups of teachers will determine, what, what am I going to do synchronously? What am I going to do asynchronously? Regardless of where the student is at. So, it'll be new learning each day.
Okay. All right. And then, I had something that went with that, and it just popped out of my head. I'm sorry. I think that, that answers that question. Thank you. Could I ask a question for Mr., is it Roser? I'm sorry. In regards to the disinfectant spray that we're using? How, how have our custodians been trained in using this? And I went online and looked up the Clorox Total 360 disinfectant spray and the guidelines of how it should be used, how we need to dispose of it, because it cannot be put into, you know, we can't dump it. It's not allowed to go into drains. It's not allowed to go into our water systems. It says we need to provide chemical-resistant, impervious gloves that comply with the approved standard, should be worn if the risk assessment indicates skin contact is possible. And that the most suitable glove chosen in consultation should be a European standard EN374. There's talk of appropriate footwear and additional protective clothing. It goes so far as to say that we have to provide eye wash stations and safety showers, anywhere that this would be used in case they got contaminated. I'm sure they'll be wearing all the proper safety gear that they need to wear, but, you know, when handling chemicals, we have to make sure that if, for some reason, something was to get on them, that they are able to properly decontaminate themselves. It even goes so far as to say contaminated work clothing should not be allowed out of the workplace and that it should be washed before reuse, clean equipment in the workday every day. They should wash their hands, obviously, at the end of, you know, before they eat or do anything else. And, you know, the respiratory protection, to make sure they're not breathing this in. And then, the hazardous waste needs to be taken care of according to our local and national provisions. So, do we have all of these, you know, and they can't be stored in anywhere. It has to be in a controlled environment, so it's not going to get hot.
I think you're looking at a different chemical than we're actually using. We're using, our main chemical that we use in the sprayers is Delpro 128. We did use, in the past, we used a Total 360, it was called. It came from Clorox. But our new chemical is Delpro 128, which also does, when you aerosol, aerosolize any disinfectant. There are many requirements, safety requirements, that we did do a, a job hazard analysis on. We had a consultant come in and do that. And we purchased the recommended PPE that they did ask. They, they do need to wear eye goggle protection. They do need to wear gloves. And they do need to wear N95 or K-N95 respirator. So, we've purchased all those for our custodians. We had our vendor come in and do a training with our custodians. We actually had fit testing done for the N95 respirator fit testing, and we provided our custodians with those, those masks. So, the chemical we're using are, it's a, that the SDS sheet shows it in the concentrated form. Actually, when it's not in the concentrated form, it's diluted down one ounce per gallon of water. So, it's fairly diluted. It's, it's not a real harsh disinfectant that we use. So, when you read the SDS sheets on some of these chemicals that we dilute down, they do look very scary. But we've had assurances that in a diluted form, the chemicals we're using are safe as long as our custodians are wearing the proper PPE, which we're, we will provide.
Thank you. Sorry, in the email, I thought it said we would use this one and then go to that other one when we didn't have this.
Yes, we started using that one, and then it, it became very difficult to source with our, with the supplier. So, we, we just switched over to the 128.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Ellison?
I just have one final question. At the last meeting, we talked a lot about how we have been communicating with other districts and learning from other districts and sharing information. And in thinking about the actions that other districts have taken in the last couple of weeks, and, you know, the beauty of being a local control state means that we can make these different decisions, what's the, the thinking behind starting a week later, rather than a soft open with a couple of weeks of distance? I mean, I know that we voted as a board to have a hybrid model this fall, and I understand that. But in looking at the decisions that Mounds View and North St. Paul Maplewood have made and other districts, what's the thinking behind the way that we are intending to go? So that we're, kids are not with teachers until September 14th, rather than starting with teachers online in that first week and continuing as a soft open, based on what conversations you've had with other districts?
Well, I think districts have, have handled it differently. The, you know, districts have, have maintained hybrid and have, are planning to open that way without, without changing. Looking at our data and our, where we're landing in Ramsey County, this is what, this is what MDH, this is what the governor's guidance is. There are, yes, there are questions, and we're, we're answering them, and we're, we're preparing to open. The delay allows the entire system to prepare better for the 14th rather than the eighth. Distance learning at the elementary is not something, I, I would not recommend that at this point unless this, you know, the numbers indicated so. I think that's an incredibly challenging endeavor to teach distance learning at the element, or at the elementary level.
element -- or at the elementary level. In secondary, I, you know, I think getting students in the building is the goal, it's a stated goal by the governor. We want students back in buildings. And we have guidance laid out by the Department of Health and the governor and the Department of Education. And so following that guidance, this is where we're at. Could it be a different -- yeah, districts are making different decisions, but this is where we are.
So it just makes me wonder with districts that are close by, because, you know, as you say, districts are making their own decisions based on the data, and districts that are in Ramsey County are making different decisions. It just makes me wonder what else am I failing to ask questions about? What else am I not considering to make sure that we get answered that they are asking? Like, I understand, I've read all the governor's recommendations. But the governor's office also required that we provide childcare for Tier 1 workers, which is wonderful and admirable for the Tier 1 workers, but then that comes with a lot of unanswered questions for us as a district. And we've talked about that quite a bit tonight, that, you know, it comes with additional costs, and it comes with the fact that we've got, you know, not enough space in our buildings. And so that alone reveals to me that there are a lot of questions that come out of the governor's recommendations as well. And clearly, this is an impossible situation. The questions that we've heard tonight have made it, and the work that you all have been doing has shown that this is an impossible situation. It is just making me wonder if other districts are going this direction. I'm sorry.
Don't be, Ms. Ellison. Finish your thought.
I'm scared. And I fully support the decision that this board made. I guess that is my job as a school board member, and I will support it, but I am scared. And I guess there's not a question to answer in that. I apologize.
Don't be.
I am so thankful for all the work that has been done. I don't know how any of us are getting any sleep at night. But this is a really important decision, and there are so many questions that I feel like you are doing your best to answer, but maybe there's no answers.
You good, Jessica? Before we move on, I want to also, I understand Mr. Torito's been in the audience. I want to make sure to give him the opportunity to speak. He's been sitting here with the rest of us. So is there anything you want to add regarding transportation? Transportation, you feel comfortable moving that forward? And I'm getting an okay, so it sounds like we're moving. Okay. Ms. Thompson, did you have a question?
I was just gonna kind of go off of Ms. Ellison. And I know what the data says. It also, in the governor's guidance, said that it was based on every district's decision based on what their buildings and their classrooms can handle. So even with the data, that's just one of the points we're supposed to take into consideration when we do this. And I feel that we can do a hybrid learning model. I feel that it is something that we can accomplish. I feel that we already have an excellent start in the right direction. As an example, Anoka Henepin decided that they would start their elementary students on the 15th, and their secondary-level students would start on the 28th. Everybody's starting on the 15th?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, that was miscommunication that I had received from a teacher in the district. I, you know, I don't want to, you know, I agree that we made a decision, and it is our job to be able to stick by that decision, and I can when I feel that we have everything in place that we need to. And I think we have a great start. And we had teachers who did an interview with a political candidate recently, and they felt very supported by everybody. They just have questions they don't feel we have yet to answer, that they would like answered before they feel comfortable getting into the classroom. They feel that they have never had an issue with cleaning supplies or any of those things of that nature, that they have always been supported, and they feel they will still be supported in that. I just don't know if one extra week is enough time at least to answer the questions on the secondary level, where we have older buildings, we have less space to work with in the classrooms. And I don't know how to do this because I haven't done it, and I don't know if it'll go anywhere, and so I don't know if it's worth doing, and like Ms. Ellison said, it's scary to do this because we already made a vote. But I also feel like that vote was rushed, not necessarily. It felt like we had to make a decision, and so we made a decision. But now I would, I don't know how you do it, if we can call a revote, or if that's even something that is allowed. But I, and I don't know if it'll go anywhere, so I don't know if it's worth doing, but there's a part of me that feels like maybe we need to reconsider extending it farther than just one week, at least on the secondary level. Can we do, start our elementary students on the date that Dr. Kazmercheck has suggested, and then we extend our secondary level just until the end of September? I don't think we need to go any farther than that. We need our kids back in school. There are all kinds of reasons that kids need to get back in school, and this isn't going away. There isn't going to be a miraculous cure that come, I don't feel that there is going to be a cure or a vaccination that comes even before the end of this year. And I don't think that we can wait for that. We have to learn how to manage this. And I think our kids are very smart, wonderful students, who, in the majority of them, are going to come to school, and even the ones who might try to buck the system in the beginning are going to get on board because they want to be in school. And they're going to follow the rules, and they're going to wear their masks, and they're going to respect distancing. Can I just have faith in them?
Excuse me, Ms. Thompson. One, I apologize for interrupting. Dr. Gillespie, are there any Kleenex in that box back there? Or is there any Kleenex in the back of the room? It's Jody's box, so she don't mind. We'll get some. While we're waiting, Ms. Thompson, please finish. I apologize for interrupting.
That's all right. I guess my question would be then, can I call a revote? And if I were to call the revote, I would ask that we get our elementary students in school as soon as possible, and we extend the secondary level to the end of the month of September.
Thank you, Marissa. Thank you very much. I don't necessarily know, I would, is Jody still in the room? Jody, so according to Robert's Rules of Order, I don't know that this session is, I know that this is a work-study session, I don't know that a vote can be had, because for us to have a vote, there has to be a, it has to be a board meeting. Is that, would that be a correct assessment? Or am I missing something? Can you turn on mic 13, please?
So you could certainly, somebody could make a motion, and you could facilitate a vote if you wish, even in a work session.
Okay.
So I guess I would move to call a revote, allowing our elementary students to start in the hybrid model on, was it the 14th or is it the 15th?
14th is a Monday.
Is the Monday. On the 14th, and then allowing our secondary students to start on the 28th of September.
Okay, there's been a motion. Is there a second for the motion?
Question on the motion that's been late.
Go ahead, ask the question.
My question would be is, well, you're saying that the high school or secondary would start on the 28th. Are you saying they wouldn't start on the 28th? Are you saying they would begin with distance learning and transition into hybrid?
Thank you, that, yeah. I wasn't very clear on that, yes. So I would ask that our elementary students start in the hybrid learning model on the 14th, and that our secondary students start with distance learning, and then move into the hybrid model on the 28th.
So you've heard the motion. Is there a second for the motion? A second by Ms. Ellison. Any discussion regarding the motion? Mr. Chapman?
I'm just wondering from a legal standpoint, since this, did we have to make an announcement in the posting for tonight's meeting that we would be taking action? I guess I'm unclear.
Turn on mic 13, please. Could you just leave it on? Thank you.
No, there wouldn't be an issue. There would be, at any point in a work-study meeting, a school board could decide to vote on something. It's very, very open in terms of what you can do in a meeting.
We wouldn't be violating open meeting law?
No, it wouldn't be.
Is there any other thing under discussion? Dr. Neemaster?
Yeah, just a little discussion on this. I mean, I have lots of questions that I feel are floating, that are mostly related to safety. Some of them are related to curriculum, but I'm most concerned with the safety issues. And I feel like last time, two weeks ago, when we discussed this, and kind of, and then had that extra meeting early and voted, there still were a lot of things that were waiting. And I trust all the good intentions and all the good work, but it's still not clear. And to go back with 8,000 kids and not have the clear tracing protocol, I don't want to have us end up like the southern schools. I think the idea of the elementary, I'm relieved that the four days are, it's more clear to me and the parents, I'm sure, that every day is unique on the learning board. I'm not sure how secondary teachers would even feel about this. I mean, that's the only thing. I think secondary kids did a whole lot better distance. I'm not sure what happens when you've got blocks, and you're only teaching three subjects, and suddenly you're distance. But we could have had that happen anyway, if there's a big outbreak. So I guess we should be able to handle it. I don't know that it does much good to leave them home. I like to see them doing work, and they're anxious to do work again, and start working on their senior year, their sophomore year, whatever. I just don't know who's ready to do anything exactly if we change it. That's my only discussion.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Boyd.
I guess I'm not sure what delaying, keeping with going hybrid at elementary, but delaying the secondary schools, I'm not quite sure what we achieve by doing that. I like the idea of delaying our start, because the biggest thing that we've been hearing from teachers is that they don't feel ready. Okay? From the emails that we get, that they're giving us their opinions on these things, is we're not ready, we're not sure what we're going to do with our rooms, we're not sure what we're going to, what the safety procedures are going to look like, we're not sure what this is going to look like. So I think the extra week with teachers in, they're in their classrooms, they're able to interact with each other, they're able to collaborate, they're able to see what everything is going to look like, as opposed to everyone is not back yet. So all of this has been theoretical until the point everybody gets back into their own room and starts setting up their stuff. So I think it's hard for everybody to grasp the theoretical, because right now, everything is theoretical. Nobody knows what's going on with the virus six months from now. You know, no one's going to be able to predict it. But we've got hard decisions to make now going forward, so I guess I just, I'd rather give the extra week and just get moving forward. Let everybody know that this is what we're going to do, here's the extra time to put in whatever it is that you need to do with your rooms, to deal with the safety issues, to have some sort of a comfort level that they don't have now because they're not there. And only if, if and until they get there, they're not going to have that safety level, or that sense of, yes, this can work. So I guess, you know, I just don't see, you postpone that, then where do we stop? Because if we're going to go with the science, then we go with the science. There's no other way around it. I don't know what else we base a decision on. If we have these parameters in place, and we follow those parameters, and we're all looking at the data, and we're all reading all of the scientific data coming out, and we're all reading the articles that are coming out, and I don't believe that we are a southern school. We're not going to allow kids to show up with no masks on, we're not going to allow 10,000 kids in a hallway so they can be super spreader events. That's not, is not what we're going to do. And I obviously would not support that anyway. But somehow, we have to find a stopping and a starting point to all of this. Because we can keep pushing it back, but I don't think we're going to see things change, not within the next couple of months. So what do we do? We have to find a way to move forward for everybody. So that's just my humble opinion. Thank you.
Sure, Dr. Neemaster.
I think the biggest issue I know with teachers is safety, but it's not just teachers, it's parents. I'm getting parents who are medical professionals that are saying, I'm not feeling good about this. I don't have enough understanding of what is being planned here. But they have a choice. They can do distance. They don't have to send their kid to school. They can homeschool, they can do a number of things. But those of us that are in the schools need to know that the safety protocol is there, whether it's mask compliance, or reporting, or what do you do with a sick kid, or how do you communicate? And I think a lot of people just aren't sure yet as they start going back to school. How is someone who is positive, has symptoms, has been exposed, does that get reported? Do they have to test, and it's slow to come back? So I think there's real safety issues with parents who have kids in our schools, and their choice is distance. their choice is distance. And the people that are here need to know what the safety protocols are. So maybe that extra four days helps that. But those are the sorts of things I'm iffy about. The number of kids in class, the spacing, the masks, the monitoring and reporting and tracking. Safety, if we're going to focus on that and say we only go by the numbers, then we have to follow the whole protocol. And I don't think that's been worked out for the parents that I see and who called me today. They're not as worried about the curriculum as I am. Too bad, but, um, so that's my last two cents, I promise.
Anyone else? Dr. Arcand?
I just have a couple of questions. If we were to make this vote and we were going to ask the elementary teachers then to report to the buildings to do their work, I'm assuming it would be safe to say that our secondary teachers would do, say they're doing distance learning? They would do distance learning from their classroom, they would still come in to work? And they should be safe because they'd be isolated in a way? Because I don't see asking one group of teachers to come in and letting another teacher, group of teachers stay home. So.
Dr. Kazmierzak, do you have?
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, yeah, point taken. And, you know, I think that's an equity question amongst the teacher ranks, yeah, so.
Mr. Chapman, did I answer a question? Dr. Arcand?
Thank you.
Mr. Chapman?
Would it be?
Mic eight, please.
Oh, sorry.
Go on, sorry.
Would it be appropriate, I guess at this point to, I believe Tiffany Dietrich is out here and I would like to hear a little bit of what, what she's got to say, if it would be appropriate to engage her in this discussion at this point?
That's not typically the way that it's done, is that we, typically any discussion would need to be appropriated through the board.
Okay.
Not that I, I don't want to, you know, I'm trying to exclude Tiffany from speaking, but typically all discussion needs to be handled within the board and questions need to be directed.
Okay. All right.
Is there anything else?
No, that's it.
I, you know, this is a difficult conversation and, and a difficult decision. You know, as a, as a parent of a, of a junior, right, as a secondary student, I, I think about these pieces and having those conversations with my son. I see both sides of it. I really do. And I've been struggling with this conversation inside of my head, which isn't a happy place right now. And I've been trying to figure out the best possible scenario to make sure the teachers are safe in the schools and doing their job and making sure that our students are safe and making sure that we're kind of moving through this conversation respectfully, but that we need to get the kids back in school. I think that there's a lot of people, a lot of parents that are saying that. And in the emails that I've been receiving, that's some of those conversations. I, in, in some ways, I agree with, with what Ms. Thompson said and, and in a lot of ways too, I agree with Ms., what, with Ms. Belloy said. I mean, there are a lot of unknown things. I've been trying to ask questions tonight regarding what are the unknown factors out there? Are we meeting the needs to make sure that our, our buildings are going to be clean and sanitized? Are the, is the air filtration, air filtration system, is it up to par? Is it updoing what it's supposed to do? Are we making sure that there's distant learning? Are we making sure that if, as, you know, as people are six feet apart from each other, are we meeting the guidelines that the governor has set out and said, hey, where are we going? And, and how this is moving? And I understand that he'd given local control back to the school board, but are we meeting those standards, those guidelines that the MDH and the MDE has set out? Those are the questions that I've been asking and I've been trying to get, you know, getting those, getting those answers. And when I listen to those answers, the, the number one thing back to me is, yes, transportation can be handled safely. That's why I asked that question. Yes, the, the air system is, is being correctly managed, right? We're working through those things. There are a lot of unknown factors out there. And I, so, you know, where, I don't know where I'm at, I'll be honest with you. I mean, I, I really don't. I wish I had some time to think through these things. I wasn't aware of a vote coming, so, but I guess we're going to find out in a couple minutes. So are there any other questions regarding the motion and the second? Seeing or hearing none, I just, well, ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Restate what we're voting on, please.
Right.
Yes. Motion is that elementary students start in the hybrid learning model on September 14th and secondary students start with distance learning and then move into hybrid on September 28th. Is that correct?
Yes.
So before, before we move on, I want to make sure we're clear. So a yes vote would be to approve the motion, a no vote would be to deny the motion.
Correct.
Could I just add one point of clarification? The only reason why I was suggesting to extend the secondary to a hybrid starting later in the month is just because those teachers seem to have the most concerns with their classroom and I feel like it would give them more time to get in their room and figure out everything they need to figure out so that we can safely bring the kids into the classroom and allow them to feel like they know how it's going to work and how they can handle it.
And you don't feel that that would be done? Dr. Kazmierzak, are you confident that that can be managed in the next three weeks?
Yes. I'm confident we could start the school year successfully on September 14th.
Other questions? Okay.
Would you like me to read the motion again?
Please.
Elementary students start in the hybrid learning model on September 14th and secondary students start with distance learning and then move into hybrid on September 28th. Ellison, aye. Mullin?
No.
Newmaster?
No.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloy?
No.
Chapman?
No.
By a four to three vote, the motion doesn't pass. We'll next move on to our next agenda item, B2, cognizant discipline, or excuse me, conscious discipline. Dr. Kazmierzak?
Okay, thank you. So just to note, the, the break, we just had a, we just had to change the tape so that we could continue recording. But while, while we were waiting for that to happen, the discussion was that we would delay the next two agenda items to a future board meeting. And I think the, the board is agreeable that we would, that we would do that, given the, the nature of the conversation tonight and the, and the length of the conversation. So we'll work to put those on to a future, probably work-study meeting or, this is item might, might, might fit on a regular meeting as well, just as an informational item, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. I will, then with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I, I motion that we adjourn.
I second that motion. All those in favor of the adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
We don't have to do that anymore.
No, we don't have to do that. All those in favor of the adjournment? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The ayes have it, we are adjourned.